One to tonight's Monday, July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven P. M. Calling the meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
I'm here.
Councilmember Kate?
Here.
Councilmember Monroe?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Banano is absent for the record. Mayor Warner?
With an excused absence. And here. So now join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we're now on to proclamation, declaring August two thousand and twenty-two as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, presented to Manir Sifi of the Islamic Center of Livermore. And Councilmember Monroe will read the proclamation.
Sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. It gives me a great pleasure to present this, this proclamation for Muslim Appreciation Awareness Month. And I will read it as follows. Unfortunately, I've tried holding this up to Zoom and because of the nature of Zoom background, didn't work so well. But trust me, it's a lovely proclamation and we will be delivering it in person to the Islamic Center shortly. This is what it says. Whereas the city of Livermore has been and continues to be home to people of different national origins, immigration, or refugee status, cultures, histories, races, ethnicities, religious affiliations, or none, gender identities, sexual orientations, ages, education, economic status, and physical, mental, or emotional abilities. Our strength is derived from our diversity and inclusiveness, from respecting one another, from welcoming immigrants and others, and from collaborating with one another across our differences. And whereas the city council believes that a city can best stand against bigotry, intolerance, and hate through leading by example and living our shared community values of welcome, inclusion, and respect, and by developing common ground in venues that allow us to talk and work together in service to each other and our community. And whereas Muslims have been part of the U. S. History from its beginning and have contributed to the production of wealth and the construction of the nation, they are also part of the rich history of the Civil Rights Movement. Over ninety thousand Muslims live in Alameda County and make innumerable contributions to the cultural, political, and economic fabric and well-being of our state and our country. And whereas the COVID- nineteen pandemic forced the temporary closure of the Islamic Center of Livermore and other mosques in the Tri Valley, during this time, these mosques and community organizations provided online programming and service sermons with small faith group prayers outside. They also answered the call for help by donating funds, distributing food, and by sewing masks to help those on the front line. And they have educated their congregations about social distancing guidelines and practices to keep the community safe. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims August two thousand and twenty-two as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, and thanks the members of the Islamic Center of Livermore for their contribution to the city and encourages members of the community to come together to celebrate our diversity. And that's on behalf of the city council of Livermore and the actual proclamation. I'm going to see if I actually can hold it up here. Oh, no, it really doesn't work. That will be delivered to the Islamic Center tomorrow or the next day. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We're now on to item four dot O Citizens Forum. City Clerk, would you please explain the process for participating in tonight's meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. First, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Second, for agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, the speaker is not required to answer questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate in person, as noticed on the agenda, apologize remotely, as noticed on the agenda. To provide a comment, please use the raise hand feature using Zoom or press star nine if you're calling in when the item begins. Once the public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. If you submitted a comment earlier today by email or e-comment, those comments have been provided to the city council and posted to the city's website earlier this afternoon. The mayor will announce conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. See, we're starting just before seven ten. So we'll allow the first thirty minutes for Citizens Forum. If there's any spillover, we'll pick it up at the end of the meeting before item eight. So that means seven forty, and the city clerk staff will announce when there's five minutes remaining. And the city clerk will announce how many speakers will be heard after the matters for consideration. So if we could, do we have any members of the public that wish to address this this evening?
Yes, Mayor, the first request to speak is from Vic Avila, followed by Carol Silva and Darcy Kent. Vic Avila, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. And can you hear me and/or see me?
Vic, we can faintly hear you.
Okay, I will. Okay, how's this? Am I, can I, can you hear me now? I
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I feel the voters should be given an opportunity to vote on the referendum. The previous mayor and council fueled the train that carries this downtown development, a development that in my estimation is a metaphorical baker's dozen. It's trying to put too many eggs in one basket, trying to do too many things in a plot, a plot that is not large enough to accommodate all the uses. The previous mayor and council fueled the train. You want to send it down the track. I feel overloaded. I feel it's a very poor idea for an iconic Western downtown. Thank you for listening.
Next speaker is Carol Silva, followed by Darcy Kent and Donna Cavan. Carol Silva, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, city council members. I'm Carol Silva, a Livermore resident who opposes the currently proposed location of Eden Housing at L. Street and Railroad Avenue. Recently, I was talking to one of my friends about the relatively recent changes and the proposed changes to Livermore's downtown, specifically the four-story legacy complex at the old Growth Brothers site and the location of the yet-to-be-built four-story Eden Housing complex. My friend stated that she knew absolutely no one who wants Eden Housing to be built at the old Lucky site. She asked me if I knew anyone who wants Eden Housing to be built at that location. I thought for a moment, trying to recall if I personally knew anyone who wanted it built there, and then I told her, I don't know anyone who wants Eden built across the street from the monstrosity of the legacy apartments. Barry Fandom, the attorney for Move Eden Housing Organization, is quoted in July twenty-first edition of The Independent, the news article entitled "City Clerk Declines to Process Referendum." Mr. Fandom provides both election code specifications and case law to support that the city clerk is in violation of her duties by refusing to process the referendum signatures on the petition that was signed by more than eight thousand registered Livermore voters. I asked the Livermore City Council to allow Livermore voters a voice on the location of Eden Housing. This is something that should have been done a long time ago, instead of trying to strategically fight against voters who have to organize against the council's decisions to have a better downtown that respects Livermore's history and that benefits all Livermore citizens and visitors. Please accept the petition and let's move on from here. Thank you.
Next speaker is Darcy Kent, followed by Donna Cavan and Zoom user. Darcy Kent, please unmute yourself. Darcy Kent, please unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Good evening to the mayor and to the city council. My parents have raised me, along with my sisters, to be working woman. We've all spent our time since we were teenagers in either part-time or full-time work. We were trained to be, to work hard, to be honest, and to be fair with the belief that women could be, are equal in every way in the world and able to contribute equally in the workforce. I have taken that to heart, and I now own two businesses with my two daughters and my husband. Through the years, the thing that I've despised the most when working is when I was bullied by someone who thought that they could get their way just by intimidation and threat. I've never experienced a bigger case of bullying, or I've never seen a bigger case of bullying than what I am seeing now. Our city clerk, Marie Weber, is experiencing the greatest act of bullying, intimidation, and threat that I've ever seen. It's unconscionable. The city clerk, as the elected officer for our city, is in, is a constitutional officer with the duty to the citizens of Livermore. The tactics used by Move Eden Housing and the Independent paper are the most egregious I've ever seen. Marie Weber, this is a small group, and their tactics are ruthless and unfair. I support you, and I know that the majority of the citizens of Livermore also support you. I fully support the Eden Housing project. It was made over the past years with several votes by the people and the council, and we are ready to move forward. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donna Cavan, followed by Zoom user and David B. Kent. Donna Cavan, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Donna Cavan, Livermore resident for forty years. Let the residents of Livermore vote. Eight thousand residents signed petitions. Eight thousand Livermore residents signed the referendum. The city voters want a voice on the location of Eden Housing. The city should respect the process and allow a vote. The residents never had a vote on the location of Eden Housing. The previous vote was on the location of the hotel and giving rights to the development there. The courts will determine if what the city is doing is legal. However, forcing this measure to go to the courts is wasting taxpayers' dollars, taxpayers' dollars that could be better spent on more critical issues. Instead, we should be putting this issue in front of the voters immediately. Respect the democratic process, government of the people, by the people, for the people. Let Livermore residents vote on this issue. Thank you.
The next speaker has the username of Zoom user, followed by David B. Kent and Lisa Tramovich. Zoom user, please unmute yourself.
Hi. Hello, Mayor and Council. This is Deborah McQueen, and I'm a thirty-year resident and homeowner in Livermore. I'd like to thank you for your work for maintaining and supporting our city. I'm asking that the council let Livermore vote on the issues at hand, allow the eight thousand Livermore citizens who signed the petition to qualify for the referendum and give the city voters a voice on the location of Eden Housing. The city should be respecting the process and allowing a vote. The courts, not the city, will determine whether what the city is doing is legal or not, but by forcing this measure to go to the courts, you're wasting taxpayer dollars again. So instead, we should be pulling this issue in front of voters immediately. I respectfully ask that you allow this to go forward. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is David B. Kent, followed by Lisa Tramovich and Lori Souza. David B. Kent, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Well, apparently, we're all talking about the same issue tonight, the referendum. I would like to express my gratitude to the city clerk for doing her duty, upholding the law, and preventing our city from descending into administrative gridlock, where no legitimate policies can be implemented based on the illegitimate actions of a disgruntled political action committee. This entire episode, which is a direct attack on our system of representative government, also makes me question if Moni Knopp is fit to serve as our next mayor. According to the Independent newspaper, Moni was a leader in the petition gathering. The citizens of Livermore elect the mayor and their district councilperson to represent their interests and act on their behalf. This is how a representative government works. Apparently, Moni doesn't agree. As mayor, will Moni fail to act and simply kick every decision back to the voters? And will he delay the implementation of every vital city program until the next election because he is uncertain and inexperienced? If so, city services would come to a complete stop. If Moni opposed the downtown plan, including the locations of the hotel, Stockman's Park, and affordable housing, why didn't he circulate a petition to block the plan at the time these legislative acts were taken? That was in early two thousand and eighteen. Well, probably it's because virtually everyone, including the Independent, supported building affordable housing at L. Street and Railroad Avenue. That was what came out overwhelmingly in the outreach process, and everyone supported it at least right up until the very moment when it looked like housing would actually be built and a hundred and thirty working families would have a safe and affordable place to live. Did people really support affordable housing here, or were they just going through the motions? I think it was the latter. Moni's claim, "Let the people decide," is self-serving. The people decided in two thousand and sixteen, when they removed two council people who had an unpopular vision for downtown, and in two thousand and eighteen, the voters rejected every candidate who opposed the new downtown plan. In two thousand and twenty, the voters again upheld the location of the hotel by a two-to-one margin, and in the fall, the voters elected supporters of the new downtown plan and rejected naysayers, such as Moni, who saw it only to dither and to delay completion of our downtown. So what is Moni really saying? Let the special interests decide? Let their money talk and screw the will of the people? If Moni is opposed to representative
Could you, your time is up. If you just conclude?
Yep. If he's opposed to representative government, why is he seeking office? And will he represent only special interests when mayor? Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Tramovich, followed by Lori Souza and Lanning Thompson. Lisa Tramovich, please unmute yourself.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Lisa Tramovich, Livermore resident and homeowner. I'm taking this moment to support city clerk Marie Weber's recent action to deny the petition for Move Eden Housing because it is simply not a referendable item. The city clerk is an elections official for our city. She is a constitutional officer with a duty to the citizens as a whole to uphold the election laws. The duty she performs support not just our city, but the democracy of the United States. Lawyers for a recently formed group calling themselves Move Eden Housing are attempting to intimidate Marie into altering her assessment and determination and submit petition signatures for further review against the rules and laws that govern the use of taxpayer dollars to put a referendum on the ballot. This group is pressuring our city clerk for their own erratic political purposes. I'm sorry she's going through this, and I want her and council to know there are citizens out here who support her and anyone willing to stand up for what's right against those using money and intimidation to get what they want without regard for the democratic process. That process has already been fully respected in the case of the downtown development, including the use of housing funds to purchase the land and the requirement to build housing on a portion of that land. We've had multiple elections, referendums, and propositions, and months and months and months of public engagement activities. We are now simply moving forward on due process already taken. The beautifully designed Eden Housing project will complement the adorable legacy apartments almost completed. These projects are part of the overall plan to support local businesses and our city as a whole. Everyone I've spoken with looks forward to these much-needed additions to our city. My friends and coworkers support Marie Lee and all city staff working against bullies and instead keeping our city moving forward. I commend our city clerk, Marie Weber, and the rest of our city staff who literally worked tirelessly to help create the wonderful city of Livermore that we all enjoy. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lori Souza, followed by Lanning Thompson and Jean King. Lori Souza, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, city council members and staff. I'm Lori Souza, and I've lived in Livermore for forty-three years. My comments this evening are directed to Marie Weber. Marie, I want you to know that the vast majority of the residents in Livermore appreciate your integrity in fulfilling your role of constitutional officer. You recently had to deny a request from the Move Eden Housing Group, knowing they would likely respond unprofessionally. I was disappointed to read the exchange you have had to have with the Move Eden Housing Group. They're not interested in the truth or fairness. Their actions are not beneficial to anyone. It's outrageous that they are suggesting that you're wasting taxpayers' money when they've been wasting millions of our taxpayers' dollars over the last few years. Even though they tried to intimidate you with their disingenuous posturing, you have shown great courage and leadership in upholding the law. They're attempting to once again mislead Livermore residents by claiming this action is that of the city council, instead of acknowledging it is what it is, a legal matter. I'm sorry you have to deal with this. It can't be easy. Your job is challenging and sometimes disheartening, and you have earned our respect and gratitude. Thank you for standing up to these bullies and for doing the right thing. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lanning Thompson, followed by Jean King and Robin Grothill. Lanning Thompson, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, council members. As a longtime affordable housing advocate and current officer of Interfaith Housing, I find it reprehensible that the group known as Save Livermore Downtown slash Move Eden Housing slash et cetera is accusing Marie Weber, our city clerk, of not doing her job properly, when in fact, she is doing just that, fulfilling her obligations as the city's election official. City Attorney Jason Alcala has determined that the council's May twenty-third decision to amend its previous legislation regarding sale of the parcel at the southeast corner of Railroad and L. Streets to Eden Housing is not in itself a legislative action and therefore is not eligible for a referendum. This property was purchased seventeen years ago with affordable housing funds specifically for the construction of apartments for families who can't otherwise afford to live and work in Livermore. There is a national shortage of workers to staff restaurants and hotels, drive buses, and perform countless other tasks we count on every day, and the situation is even worse in Livermore because the cost of housing is extremely high. Move Eden Housing's petition to challenge the council's recent decision so that some future council might decide something different, was on shaky grounds to start with, and is just another of their delaying tactics. I pray that future council members will be able to discern that the elite citizen groups' alternative plans to move the housing across the street are impractical, unworkable, and possibly unfundable, and probably just a ploy to ultimately eliminate this desperately needed affordable housing. As our election official, Ms. Weber's job is to ensure that our elections are completely legal and that ballot issues are not encumbered by confusing trumped-up referenda. I see her actions as totally appropriate in this case. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jean King, followed by Robin Grothill and Alan Marley. Jean King, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Jean King. I ask you to submit the referendum petitions for verification. The more than eight thousand who signed the petition are asking for a voice in the development of the downtown. The signers must not be ignored. We are not a small group. More citizens would be here this evening to speak in person, but are discouraged since most comments must wait until the end of the meeting, but it is uncertain how late that will be. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the process to have the agenda items heard before the Citizens Forum, just that it does make it less likely for citizens to wait to speak until the end. I thank you for accepting written comments by email and including them in the supplemental comments in the agenda packet. In that packet, there are seventy-five additional comments submitted there in favor of the referendum and allowing a vote. There are four comments supporting the city. This is such an important decision for the heart of our city. Let the citizens be heard. Listen to us. Take our comments seriously. We are not a small group. We are largely supported by the community members. Citizens have the voice with the city development. They should be speaking the voice and deciding what is going on downtown. The legal decisions about what exactly is the proper legal method to move forward will be made by knowledgeable legal authorities. In the meantime, let's make sure that the voices of the citizens are heard. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Robin Grothill, followed by Alan Marley and Alan Burnham. Robin Grothill, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Hi, this is Robin Grothill, and I am a lifetime Livermore resident, fifty-three years, third generation of Livermore family to be here. Obviously, I'm very vested with what's going on downtown, given that my old dealership was the site where the legacy buildings are now built. I am very frustrated, sitting back, watching the citizens of Livermore be withheld a voice and a part to be in this decision to loan the money to Eden and also to complete this purchase before this can go to a vote to the citizens. If, you know, what I'm hearing is all of these people saying that everybody's for it. That's not been my experience. Everybody I've spoken to, and again, I know a lot of people in this town being here fifty-three years, I have not heard any I have not heard anybody that is for the downtown placement of the affordable housing. Everybody is for affordable housing, just not in that location. So I believe that it is something that the city council should put to a vote of the citizens. If you are so sure that this is what the citizens of Livermore want, there is no harm in letting us have a voice come November and finding out that this truly is what is voted for by the majority of Livermore citizens. So I believe that the referendum should, whether the referendum stands or not stands, but this should be put in some capacity towards a vote to the Livermore citizens so we can find out once and for all what the majority of Livermore wants. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Marley, followed by Alan Burnham and Mary Ann Brent. Alan Marley, please unmute yourself.
I'm born and raised in Livermore, mayor and council members. First of all, I would like to thank the city clerk, Mary Weber, for her work. She is doing her job in service to Livermore and does not deserve to be attacked for following the law. I wish I could say that respect for the law is shared by the Move Eden Housing campaign and its plutocratic sponsors. They view our legal system as a tool to veto decisions made by democratically elected officials, even unanimous votes in favor of affordable housing. The plutocrats are willing to fundraise for lawsuits that delay necessary infrastructure, no matter how many taxpayer dollars that litigation wastes. This referendum is no different. First of all, it's illegal. The past administrative decision made by the city council cannot be changed, no matter how many signatures you pay people to gather. The referendum organizers knew this, but still deliberately wasted everyone's time signing outside supermarkets as a promotional stunt for Move Eden Housing and as another delay tactic. Neither can Eden Housing be moved. The city doesn't own the alternative land, and even if it did, trying to relocate the affordable housing would delay it by at least half a decade. Housing is a matter of social justice, and justice delayed is justice denied. Campaigning to move Eden Housing is a continuation of the smoke and mirrors deception from the independent owner Jones Sepulveda. Strip away the unethical journalism and impossible promises, and you have a campaign platform against affordable housing in a housing crisis. I would like to think that Livermore is better than that. The Move Eden Housing campaign claims the signatures they gathered gives them a mandate. Nothing could be further from the truth. The people they paid to lurk outside supermarkets pitched the referendum as a way to help house the homeless. People signed in support of affordable housing like Eden, not against it. They wouldn't have been so quick to sign if the paid gatherers had been at all truthful. Say if they'd said, "Will you waste a few minutes of your time to delay local affordable housing another year to satisfy the whims of plutocrats Jones Sepulveda and Jean King who think they own the town and are furious they don't own the city council yet?" Anyway, sign here. The affordable housing is for people making our wine, people answering calls at the police station, people caring for our elderly in nursing homes, and people teaching our kids. We owe so much to these workers, and to return their service by scornfully denying them a place to live is not becoming of Livermore. Thank you.
Excuse me, mayor and council members. We have five minutes remaining in citizens forum.
The next speaker is Alan Burnham, followed by Mary Ann Brent and Jackie Coda. Alan Burnham, please unmute yourself.
For four years, a group known as Save Livermore Downtown has worked against the city on revitalizing the town instead of with it, wasting both their money and the city's money. Most recently, they collected signatures on a referendum with legality that is dubious at best. SLD either knew or should have known that it was likely that any such vote, if held, would be meaningless, so it was clearly just a political ploy. Now that the city clerk has declined to process the referendum's signatures, moral outrage accompanies their disinformation campaign. I support the city clerk not doing something of such a dubious legality. I will restate my position I have expressed earlier. Two to three years ago, it might have been possible to come up with a compromise plan that would be better than the current plan, but the ship has sailed. If the city is not sued by the Save Livermore Downtown Group or one of their affiliates, it will be sued by affordable housing groups. Unless someone comes up with tens of millions of dollars very soon, we will get the current Eden plan, or worse, after wasting more time and money on pointless posturing. It's too bad that they didn't put a referendum in front, collect signatures for a referendum for raising $50 million, give or take, in order to move the housing plan, if they really wanted to move it, and see how the voters thought about that sort of initiative. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mary Ann Brent, followed by Jackie Coda and Doug Mann. Mary Ann Brent, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and council members and staff. I am disappointed that the city wishes to reject a petition for a referendum against the transfer of land to Eden Housing. However, the legal decision regarding the petition is not yet concluded. The progress of the petition has been interrupted. Livermore voters have a right to petition the city. The city accepted their petition, and the city clerk had a duty under the elections clause to process the petition. This did not happen. Livermore voters who signed the petition for a referendum deserve to be recognized. The petition should be processed and forwarded to Alameda County Register of Voters, which checks that the signatures are from people who are registered to vote in Livermore. The referendum then returns to Livermore, where the city can adopt the referendum or put it to a vote in November. Livermore voters' wishes need to be recognized. That is the issue here. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next speaker is Jackie Coda, followed by Doug Mann and Moni Knapp.
Excuse me, I think this will be the last speaker before we pick it up at the end of the meeting.
Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
Over the last two years, we've seen council take steps consistently to punitively punish community members for exercising their rights according to the law. Why are we surprised when presented with 8,000-plus signatures in one month's gathering? We, the people's objection to more stack-packed building in the heart of our downtown, looming over Blacksmith Square, is ignored. Let Livermore vote. 8,000-plus Livermore citizens sign petitions to qualify a referendum, giving the city voters a voice on the location of any more housing. Why do you feel it's fair to sell city property to only a single entity? I thought you had an obligation to present for sale property to bid. I could be wrong, but it doesn't seem equitable or inclusive. The city should be respecting the process and allowing a vote, just like they did with the hotel location. This has not been voted on by the people. In fact, the community outreach, unlike what was said previously, said that people wanted open space and to maintain the downtown ambiance. Our community members have spoken in swift action multiple times. The fact the city is playing political games with the preservation of our downtown ambiance is puzzling. When presented with the facts that more, there will be more housing where that parking lot is currently, the community is against it. No matter how many special interest comments council picks meetings with, community members are against it. Furthermore, the city marketing as workforce housing, trying to appeal to the uninformed ocean by painting misinformation that first responders and teachers will be living there, is unconscionable. Foundry levels of those professions exceed Eden's limits. We'd rather it remain an open lot than... Why not? Farmers markets can be there, local car shows, food trucks, festivals, would be much better use of that space, complementing the Black Box Theater and Science Center. And unlike Mr. He-Them, who said the city doesn't own other land, they do, across from heritage estates. There's city-owned property outright right there, they can move it. And there's schools, fuel, grocery stores over there. So why not farmers markets can be, you know, where the current open spaces, local car shows? Like I said, there's plenty of other spaces we've presented that make more sense for housing. I encourage every community member to remember this when going to the polls in November. This council and their personal agendas have gone too far. Certainly do not reelect any current or previous council mayoral members. People are moving to Livermore because they enjoy the ambiance of our downtown festivals, ultimate car cruisers, shows, parades, rodeos, and the good hometown feely. Don't ruin our center gathering places by infringing on community open space with intrusive housing. Don't forget about what the city is doing to our downtown come this November. It's time for Livermore to get back to making Livermore great again.
Okay, that concludes the first 30 minutes of our citizens forum. We'll pick it up again after 7:03. We're now on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by the city council. With a single action, members of the audience wishing to provide public input must submit a speaker card and use the raise hand feature in Zoom during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. And before I go to public comment, would the council like to pull any of the items for discussion? Councilmember Monroe.
I do not wish to do that, but what I did want to do is actually return to the proclamation. I believe I saw the MCC Zoom moderator, generally we allow someone receiving a proclamation to have a comment. I don't think we did that, and I just wanted to see if we could return there briefly and give a chance for a response.
Okay, you saw this earlier but didn't let us know, or anyway, go ahead. Is there someone who would like to?
I saw it during public comment and did not have a way to really respond. This is the first opportunity. Sorry.
That's fine.
Hello, council.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. This is Munir Safi with the Muslim Community Center. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for honoring our state's designation of August being Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. This is the seventh year this designation has happened in California, and this is the second year this happened in Livermore. I can tell you the hundreds of Muslim families in Livermore and the nearly 15,000 Muslims in the Tri-Valley. We truly appreciate the Livermore City Council presenting this proclamation today. So I'm representing the Pleasanton Muslim Community Center. We serve the entire Tri-Valley. We're a vibrant regional mosque, and we've been on in Pleasanton for the past 11 years. And I'm also joined by colleagues in congregation from the Islamic Center of Livermore. They were watching online and probably are still watching. I just want to quickly say, American Muslims, we've lived and contributed to our community since our country's founding. The last second and a half, the impact of Islamophobia has been real. But despite this, we continue to do our blood drives, our voting drives, our highway cleanups, our weekly food distributions. We have an open door policy at our Friday services. We serve as a Red Cross disaster site, host ESL classes, interfaith events, open houses. We're a green mosque, special needs friendly mosque. So you can hear we're just part and parcel of our community, and I can tell you that this recognition makes a world of difference for your Livermore constituents who are Muslim. So again, on behalf of Livermore residents that are Muslim and Tri-Valley residents who are Muslim, we thank you so much for this proclamation and this recognition. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all you're doing, and thank you, Councilmember Monroe, for recognizing that he was still in the audience. So thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Zoom is just an odd thing to work with, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, so I've seen no councilor who wants to pull any of the consent calendar items for separate discussion. I'll, at this point, open public comment on the consent calendar. Is there anyone who wishes to address us on any of the items?
Yes, mayor, there are three requests to speak. First is from Ayesha Straub, followed by Purnam Sheth and Carl Winty. Ayesha Straub, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. Just wanted to, thank you for taking the time for this. I was looking over the matters and consideration. I was actually thinking about this for the last couple of months, and I've noticed that you guys are authorizing the purchase of a couple items here. And I was wondering why we're even voting on this. If anything, we should be taking these things to the people to vote on this. I know we're purchasing something for $250,000. That's a lot of money. We should be taking all of these items off and then taking it to the people simply because we are purchasing things. And as we've heard the last couple of days and then local media and in tonight's public comment, that purchases like this should not be voted on by council, even though you were voted on to do so, that they should be taken to the people. And for anybody listening, if that sounded ridiculous is because it was complete sarcasm. All of these items are, you know, standard things that the council does. And if everybody in Livermore was expected to vote onto these sort of items, nothing, and I mean absolutely nothing, would get done. These are the things that we have voted, everybody on this council, to do, to represent the citizens of Livermore, and I'm thankful that they're taking their time to do so. Because if we didn't, we might as well abolish the council and the mayor and just have a direct democracy for every single item and get nothing done. So again, I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank the staff for putting all this information together and providing it to the public so we can see in a transparent manner how this money is being appropriated for various things that keep our city running smoothly for everybody's benefit. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Next speaker is Purnam Sheth, followed by Carl Winty and Jackie Coda. Purnam Sheth, please unmute yourself.
Hello there. Hi, this is Purnam Sheth. Used to be a resident of Livermore and in Pleasanton and active involvement in many items concerned valley. This is regarding 5.9, which is the resolution to temporarily suspend the airport development policy and create new policy. As council is well aware, there was over 6,500 people signing petition to, really against the Kaiser project, which is a large project. And another 1,500 people actually were at the council in 2004, if you recall, really not looking for an airport expansion. I do applaud the airport management for wanting to redevelop the policy. It's outdated and needs a lot of work. What really does no need to happen is that in the development of this policy, my recommendation is that you actually select non-aviation-related citizens to be part of the committee to develop this policy. The city of Livermore has two major impacts in that development of the airport. One is that you actually set the policy of how development happens. This is something that the FAA doesn't do. The second thing is you, as council and the city of Livermore, you set the policy of the land use. So if you want large hangars, you can put large hangars in your policy. If you want a certain restriction on height, which would lower the types of planes or the types of activities on that land, you get to set it. This is something that Livermore staff have really failed to consistently inform the council that they actually, you actually have control on the airport land and land use and the policy. So my recommendation on this particular resolution, several things. One is it has community involvement. Non-aviation-related members are on the committee so that the public voice, the community voice, the mass majority of citizens, is involved in the development of this policy and not just something that's built from a set of airport principles and rubber stamped later. Second is direction to airport staff to put in this policy what is needed to either limit or restrict the land use that the citizens of Livermore have asked for for over 15 years now. Third is transparency, that all applications are immediately provided and made public as opposed to be hidden, right now hidden, you can't find out what they are in whatever the current process is. So at the end of the day, really make sure that this policy, and this is the direction I'd like for you to give to the airport staff, that the policy is aligned with the public sentiment of no large FPOs, large jets, and additional noise. This is your choice now, council. I want to thank you very much. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carl Winty, followed by Jackie Coda. Carl Winty, please unmute yourself.
Hello, city council, Mr. Mayor, staff of the great city of Livermore. My name's Carl Winty. I've been in this town, around this town for five generations and care deeply. And I'm talking on the consent calendar, which is about really the process of government. What is good government? How does government work? And we are a constitutional, representative, democratic republic, and the constitutions are stacked with the US Constitution, which laid out the three And the constitutions are stacked with the US Constitution, which laid out the three legislative, executive, and judicial California Constitution, which per Article Two, Section Nine, does provide for referendum process, process of government, California Constitution. Then there's Alameda County General Plan, City of Livermore General Plan. There's various other area plans, specific plans that go into it. But good government is a process. And the good thing about it too is we document this stuff. So we can bear witness, we can go back and look at what the truth was of situations because of the process like this. Again, I'm speaking on the consent calendar as a representation of how you go from our proclamations to our open to the consent matters or to matters for consideration to matters initiated, part of the process that goes through. And so legislative, executive, and judicial, but in the city, the legislative and executive sort of overlay with the city manager and how it operates and the mayor, so that becomes administrative. And Article Two, Section Nine, per this good government and this flow, sort of clearly states what are legislative acts and what are administrative versus executive, what are judicial, because of this stacked constitution, because of how this process works. So I just like to again thank the city government, the people that can help us continue to make this work. This this worst form of government, except for every other form of government that's ever been. And it happens indeed because of people, of the people, by the people, for the people, by all means, follow the process. Follow the good books of those stacked constitutions. Go back and we can go through and we understand how it works. So I would just want to say thank you for those that care, that lean in and that are trying to hold this little experiment together the best that we can. I'd also like to thank those who put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, keep us safe, those who wear a badge, those that are fighting fires, and knock on wood. May we not have fires come our way, but just those that serve, take part in the community. I salute you, the elected officials, ye, Mr. Mayor, city council. Thank you for serving. Thank you, city staff, for knowing your duty is to have this be an open, public, and purposefully slow process. You know, our voices matter. So I appreciate everyone leaning in, speaking up, and caring about our city. Namaste.
The next speaker is Jackie Coda. Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I'm speaking specifically about on the consent calendar. There's a couple of items with regard. I'd like to make a few comments. The Fleet Service Truck, the Peterson Truck Incorporated. You know, I think it's good to see that the city is is spending money where it's appropriate because city services and law enforcement, truly what is government's number one role, and that is to serve the people, we the people. One more item also, you know, that's on here is the airport policy. I see that it's going to be rewritten. Just want people to keep in mind, you know, that, you know, increasing hangar space so that repairs can be done over at Livermore Airport is not such a bad thing, actually. It's a good thing. And plus, you know, everybody who's purchased a home within the flight path, you've all been warned and you've all been notified years and years ago. I know I was when I was considering buying a house over in that area, that the airport would be expanded. So the fact that people are bellyaching about it still is unconscionable. But more so as far as wrapping it up with regard to the consent calendar, Mr. Strout's comments being quite sarcastic. You know, we the people have a right to make comments, public comments, on any item that we want. And, you know, telling people as far as the consent calendar, some people that are online right now think that the council's going to cover each agenda item, that they have to wait until they raise their hand, until they get to that agenda item before they make a comment, not realizing that on the consent calendar, they need to speak up about anything underneath there right now, otherwise they're going to lose their opportunity. That not being clarified before has made it so that people on Zoom in the past have had their voices squashed, just like the referendum where the people, the will of the people are being squashed. You know, it's not okay. If people want to speak up, it's they, it's important for the council to listen to we the people, because that's their job to listen. And when they don't listen, then we the people have to take steps to force them to listen, especially when they're contradictory in their words and actions. And not only that, when they spread misinformation, such as saying that the city clerk is an elected position. It's not. It's not an elected position. I'm saying that she's Ms. Ms. Weber is being bullied. Hey, following the legal process is not bullying someone. And then coming back and blaming something on Moni Knapp. You know, that's absolutely ridiculous. You know, these consent items that are here under the calendar, these are for what the council needs to be reviewing as well as the the public. And saying that someone who is against something that someone, the community is bringing to the city, is bullying is ridiculous.
Mayor, at this time, there are no more requests to speak.
Close the public comment, bring it back to the council. Any discussion or do I have a motion? Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted some clarity on five point nine. Mr. Sheff brought that up about the makeup of the the folks that would work on the policy. What is the, do we get to weigh in on that at some later date? I know we're just going to approve the fact that we want to suspend the current policy, but I just wanted to know what the process would be moving forward. Can somebody help me with that?
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor, if I may, this is your city manager, Mariana Madrashova. Councilmember Carling, you're absolutely right. Item four, five point nine will suspend the current administrative policy. We do not have a council-approved comprehensive development policy. Staff will take time to draft a comprehensive policy, and that policy will go through at least two rounds of review. One is with the airport commission that is comprised of pilots and non-pilots, and there will be an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that policy during commission meeting or meetings. The second round of reviews will be with the city council, where the city council will review the commission's recommendations and staff's recommendations as well. Hopefully that answers your question, Councilmember Carling.
Yes, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? So I'll just say that on that, I'm pleased that that five nine is on the agenda. And I think that's what we need to do to look at the airport and to get the input on it. So do I, anybody care to make a motion for the consent calendar? Councilmember Monroe.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kik.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Bananas absent for the record. Mayor Warner.
Hi. That passes unanimously. We're on now to six dot one, hearing to adopt a resolution approving the waiver and refund of one hundred and thirty-two K in penalties and interest related to the delinquent special taxes living in the city of Livermore Community Facilities District ninety-nine dash one. That's the Tri-Valley Technology Park on property owned by the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District. We have a staff presentation, please.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Warner and members of the city council. This is your city manager, Mariana Madrashova. Item six point one will be presented by Tina Olson, the city's Administrative Services Director. Ms. Olson? Ms. Olson, if you're trying to speak, we can't hear you. You must be muted.
There we go. Sorry. I'm going to try again with the saving. Do you hear me now?
We can hear you, Ms. Olson, but we can't see your slides anymore. If you could put them up, please. Almost there. Let's go. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry about this. So good evening, Mayor Warner. Good evening, Mayor Warner and city council members. This is Tina Olson, your Administrative Services Director. To provide some background on this evening, the item before you this evening, in nineteen ninety-nine, the city established the Community Facilities District, or CFD ninety-nine dash one, to support the Tri-Valley Technology Park development to allow the city to levy special taxes in that district to be used to repay bonds and related administrative expenses. Those bonds were used to help pay for infrastructure improvements in the Tri-Valley Technology Park area. In twenty eighteen, the Livermore School District acquired three properties in CFD ninety-nine dash one. The school district mistakenly thought it was exempt from paying the CFD taxes and therefore did not pay them for four years. In March of this year, the school district paid the back CFD taxes and one hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars in penalties and interest. The school district requested a waiver and refunded those penalties and interest. Since we do not require the one hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars to pay debt service on the bonds or to administer the CFD, staff supports the school district's request to waive and refund the penalties and interest. As such, staff recommends the city council hold a public hearing and approve waiver and refund of the school district's CFD penalties and interest after deducting expenses of two thousand dollars incurred by the city to address delinquency and waiver requests. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this point. Is there anyone who wishes to address us?
Here are no comments have been received.
Close the, closing the public hearing on six dot one, bring it back to the council for deliberation. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Monroe.
I will second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. No further discussion. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kik.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bananas absent for the record, and Mayor Warner.
Hi. Passes unanimously. Thank you. We're on to six dot two. Hearing to consider comments and protests relating to the disposition of city-owned property at twenty-three, twenty-four Second Street. That's the former switch and to to Mr. Michael Messenger for the purposes of converting it from an office to restaurant use and a resolution approving the sale of the property and authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Michael Messenger to update the schedule of development. We have a staff presentation, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Warner, members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Madrashova. Item six point two will be presented by Fran Reisner, our Housing Programs Manager. Ms. Reisner?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Madrashova. Oh, excuse me, one second. Okay. Can everyone see my, see my screen properly now? Yes, Ms. Reisner, we're going to see you very much. Thank you. Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am Fran Reisner, Housing Programs Manager. Tonight, for council's consideration, are actions and approvals necessary to complete the disposition of the twenty-three, twenty-four Second Street property to the buyer, Mr. Michael Messenger? The subject property is located at the corner of South Livermore Avenue and Second Street. The building was constructed in nineteen twenty-eight to house the Bell Telephone Service and continuously operated as a telephone-related use until the city's former redevelopment agency purchased it from SBC in two thousand and four. The building was intermittently used for storage until twenty-eleven, when the city solicited letters of interest from prospective buyers and selected Mr. Michael Messenger, who proposed to convert the building into a restaurant use. Mr. Messenger also owns the Pete's Coffee and Tequila's Taqueria Building next door, and his concept creates some opportunities for synergy between the properties. Upon dissolution of the redevelopment agency, the asset was transferred to the city. The city's long-range property management plan identified the site to be sold to Mr. Messenger for the stated purpose, and the Oversight Board for the former redevelopment agency approved that plan. And in twenty twenty-one, the city entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Messenger. So under the terms of the purchase and sales agreement, the buyer will, Mr. Messenger will pay eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the city for the building as is in its current condition. The buyer will redesign the property to convert it to a restaurant use, as mentioned, and that that use will support the development goals of the city's downtown specific plan. As a condition to complete the sale, the buyer is required to secure a downtown design approval and a consistency determination with the historic requirements. Both of these approvals are being processed at staff level. Included in the staff report and displayed here is our rendered images of the proposed design. Mr. Messenger has proposed significant upgrades to the building, including the addition of a raised patio deck along Livermore Avenue and Second Street, new windows and doors, the installation of elevator access to all floors, a rooftop patio for dining, and landscaping and lighting improvements. Staff is currently working with him to finalize the design. The purchase and sales agreement also requires the buyer to submit building plans for all structural and tenant improvements and sets the date for transfer to occur no later than December thirty-first of this year. So the design process, as you can see, there's another angle of view of the proposed design. The design process is nearly complete, and now the purchase and sales agreement needs to be amended with the schedule of development adjusted to reflect the updated development timeline. According to the amended timeline, conditions would remain in place to ensure the buyer makes progress on his proposed plans as follows. So the buyer, as I mentioned, will secure all design approvals and clearances estimated at the end of this month or early part of August. The buyer will submit a building permit application for all structural and tenant improvements to the city's building division by November first and will secure a determination of completeness with that application from the city's building official by December first. And under the agreement, the city manager would be authorized to further adjust deadlines with the exception of the deadline to close escrow, which is necessary to maintain in order to comply with an exemption from rules, current property disposition rules imposed by the state. So now staff recommends city council hear any comments and protests on the following actions related to the disposition of the twenty-three, twenty-four Second Street property and adopt a resolution authorizing the following. Take final action to approve the sale of the property as set forth by Government Code Sections thirty-seven, four twenty-two dash through thirty-seven, four twenty-three and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city of Livermore the First Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Mr. Michael Messenger and all related documents necessary to effectuate the sale of the property subject to city attorney's form approval. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'm able to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak. Alan Burnham. Please unmute yourself.
Yeah, this is Alan Burnham. And people earlier were talking about how long they've lived here. I've lived here for forty-five years, just in case that makes any difference, which it probably should not. Anyway, I was not planning to speak on this. I didn't even know about the architectural design. But what we heard earlier this evening was a lot of people complaining about something after the decision is made and it was too late. Well, I would like to register my objection now to the architectural style. I think it fails by a long margin of having an architectural style compatible with the downtown. Now, I realize you're dealing with a sales agreement here, and the design is not finalized, but what I'm concerned about is that, oh, is that, you know, if now's not the time to object about the the architectural, when will it be and will it be too late? So I think that there needs to be a clause in here that the architectural style has to change. So I think that there needs to be a clause in here that the the architectural style has to change significantly to make it more compatible with the downtown. And and I give an example of of the the Spark Theater where they actually tried. To come up with a design which balanced historical architecture with with kind of a modern feel. And and when I looked at this particular design, I was reminded of the book The Fountainhead. Some of you may have read that. I read it fifty some years ago. Where Howard Rourke designed a building and then somebody, well, he with a less derogatory. Term than people changed the design, so we went and blew it up. Well, that was kind of my impression of what. This architectural style has done to this particular building. I realize it needs to have substantial renovation, but it just, it looks like. Two architectural styles which are completely incompatible. And and that's so so basically, I want to make sure that if you approve this tonight. That that. There's not a decision ever coming forth that this particular design gets passed. Thank you very much.
Mayor, at this time, there are no more requests to speak.
I would like, if possible, staff to respond to Mr. Burnham's question about. The design approval process.
Mr. Mayor, this is Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. This scale of design is approvable at staff level. If the council has concerns about design. You can let us know this evening and or direct us to bring it back to you for final approval.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'll bring it back to council for deliberation. I, I'll just say, I, some of. Mr. Burnham's comments resonate with me. And I would like to see some. Input from the community and the council on the design. Any other comments from anyone on the council? Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor, right? I guess the rendering. In the one slide shows. Just to be clear, the. The rendering looking at it from the corner of Second and Livermore. I see tiled roof in the back. That's the. Original. Building, if I'm not mistaken, and then. The part that he's talking about renovating and turning into a restaurant. Was built in sixty seven, is that correct?
Correct. So the the historic part of the building is the portion that you see with the with the tile roof and. Our historic guidelines do require. That you not have a faux historicism, so we shouldn't mimic that style, but. That's, that's about as far as those guidelines go. So you need to be distinct and different. I guess the other thing that I would say is if the council would like us to take this through a public hearing process. We might also ask. For the discretion for the city manager to allow the sale to move forward. By the end of the year, we don't want the sale date to be held up by a public hearing process here.
Yeah, yeah, I I agree with moving the sale forward. I guess I would appreciate the opportunity to look at the. At the plans. At some point after the sale and after you, after Mr. Messenger works with city staff. On the design. So, thank you.
Uh, council member Monroe.
I I would concur with that. I'm looking at the designs right now and. Walk by that pretty frequently. Doesn't do much for me. On the other hand, I also want to be mindful of. Being deep in the weeds. There's some balance here. There's also some balance between. Being true to the historic nature of this building, which has been around a long time and seen a lot. And with it was moving forward, so. But yes, let's let's let the sale go forward so that we can. Begin the work that we we need to do to complete the downtown.
Council member Kick.
Uh, I actually like it. So I think it doesn't really matter though, because I don't think that's our job. I think we should let Planning Commission look into that. And, you know. I I don't, I don't want us to get too medley in in figuring out what what a design should look like when we're trying to get a sale done. Also, just in general. I I think that it's okay to have things that are new and. Different sometimes than having the entire downtown look exactly the same, so I just wouldn't stress on it, is what I'm saying. Uh, I would like to move that we. Take staff recommendation. And approve the sale of this building. That I think will be a very cool restaurant.
With the caveat that the design will come back through the planning commission?
Through the planning commission. I'm pretty sure they have to have the design go through the planning commission, whether we ask for it or not. Am I?
That's not what I heard.
It is a staff level approval, but again, the council could ask us to go to the planning commission.
So if you, so my request is that your motion be to make approved staff recommendations with the. Proviso that the design come through the planning commission. And the public process.
I don't know that we need all of that.
I I think it's really unnecessary. So my my motion is to have us take staff recommendation. No one agrees to second, then that's on them.
I'll second.
Okay, moved in seconded. To have a, I. I believe we should look at the, you know, the design. Needs another look, so. You've moved in seconded, so let's have a roll call.
That's my Carling.
Can I ask for clarification? I mean, that. Approving the sale and the following, the. The dates provided in the presentation. Don't. Obviate the request to bring the design back to us for. Review at some later date, does it?
Well, let's, let's just be clear. That wasn't, if you, we, let's ask staff. But if we were approved staff recommendations as is, it's not coming back.
That's correct. If you approve the recommendation, staff would work with the applicant on the final design. And it would move forward with the identified schedule.
Right, so that's why I'm a little confused, Councilmember Carling, because you. Said you wanted to see the design and now you're moving it without reviewing the design, so I don't know which way we're going here.
Good question. I was confused as well, so I. Okay, so the way the staff recommendation, we wouldn't see it again, is that right?
That's right.
Well, I don't know what we do at this point.
Well, you can withdraw your second. Or we can vote and you can vote no.
I got kicked out, so I missed what happened.
We need to. Well, I was confused about what we were considering. I thought that approving the sale by the end of the year. To me, that was the important thing.
If I may.
Yes, please.
Sorry, um, thank you, Councilor. Um, I think as Paul mentioned, the key date is to be able to complete the sale. By the end of the year, as you mentioned, the agreement, the amendment authorizes. The city manager to modify the other dates. So the deadlines for the applicant to submit. To get a design approval and to submit building plans that reflect that design approval. So I think under the current agreement, it would give flexibility to the applicant too. So if if there was additional. Design review that the council. Wanted, then we would still, under the proposed agreement, be able to. Be flexible, I think, with those particular dates and potentially. Depending on the level of review, move them past. The sale date, but the sale date is is the critical path here. So being able to move forward as is with the sale date. Of December thirty first approved would be. I think critical for the applicant, for the buyer.
So here's. My recommendation is that we do that. We approve moving forward with the sale date. And we make it crystal clear, we're talking about this coming back for design review. And that if we just go with stack recommendations, it's not required, so. Councilmember Carling, you've got, I believe you have the choice. You can withdraw your second, or we can proceed with the vote and you can vote no. Or you can vote yes, depending on what you want to do.
Can he second with an amendment or do a friendly amendment? So we can make this go faster.
Well, that's what I was asking for in the first place. So. Let's just. Do you both want to withdraw your? First and second, then we'll start.
Okay, yes. I will withdraw my first and re-first move that we go with stack recommendation. I don't think it needs to come back to us. I don't need, think it needs to have a big public comment period. I think we should let Planning Commission. Do that if necessary, and people can show up to Planning Commission if they need to. I just don't want to get in the habit of us continuing to delay projects because we're getting really picky about stuff. That makes sense.
Right, okay, so you're moving staff recommendations with the caveat that the design. Passed through the planning commission.
Yes, but that doesn't need to come back to us.
That's fine. So is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, council member Monroe.
I just wasn't sure how fast Councilmember Carling was going to second, but he did, so.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
That's my Carling.
Hi.
That's my member Kick.
Hi.
That's my member Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bananas absent for the record and Mayor Warner.
Hi, passes unanimously. Okay. We're on to. I think one of the main events, six dot three. Hearing to consider a request for a site plan design review. Investing tentative track map to develop the northeast corner of Portola Avenue. And Collier Canyon Road, which would implement the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. We have staff presentation, please.
Yes, good evening once again, Honorable Mayor Warner, members of the city council. This is Mariana Marasheva, your city manager. Item six point three will be presented by Jake Potter, Associate Planner. Mr. Potter?
Yes, thank you. Let me just share my screen here. One moment, please. All right, so as described, you know, good evening, Mayor and members of city council. We'll be discussing the Shea Portola project that does implement. The Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. So by way of background, the outreach for the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan began back in two thousand and fourteen. And carried on through public hearings through two thousand and eighteen. And ultimately into twenty twenty, when the city council adopted the final plan. And in twenty twenty, the city council made the decision for land use and density for the entire plan area. And the goal here was for a walkable, bikeable, transit oriented development. You can see here, I'm showing the land use plan for the specific plan. And it's located within the northwest part of the city, and it's about eleven hundred acres in size. The plan contemplates about four thousand residential units. And tonight's project is located here. This is known as Site Two B within the plan area. So zooming into the specific project site, it's about thirteen acres in size, located at the corner of Collier Canyon Road and Portola Avenue. There is the existing Montage Presidential Community to the North. And the overall project proposes two hundred and ninety nine total units. That consists of eighty nine condominium units for sale on the western side of the site. And two hundred and ten for rent luxury apartments on the eastern side of the site. The condominium units consist of individual floor plans from about sixteen hundred feet in size to twenty four hundred feet in size. While the luxury apartments consist of units from about seven hundred to thirteen hundred feet in square feet in size. Now, the project is similar in height to the Montage sort of community to the north, both exhibiting three story development. And it is of a similar density near twenty five dwelling units an acre. You can see primary access for this proposed site plan occurs off of Portola Avenue here at a new signalized intersection. With secondary access at the northeast corner along Dove Coat Lane. And emergency vehicle access as well on Dove Coat Lane. Other features of the site include parklets scattered throughout the project and a central pool deck area for the apartment side of the project. Now, as as stated in the previous slide, it's important to note that the city council is operating in its quasi judicial role this evening. Again, the density and the land use decision was made back in twenty twenty, and so the council's reviewing this project against the established standards. To make sure that it is in conformance with the specific plan. Now, the designer of the elements, you know, the architecture, landscape, site design. Are discretionary in nature. If the city council makes the required findings, then they they may approve. However, the density bonus portion of the project that we'll discuss. In a later slide is ministerial, and it is a requirement of state law in that if the project meets certain thresholds. Then the city council is obligated to approve that portion of the project. Now here we're showing the architecture and the landscape. On the left hand side of the screen, you'll see at the top left, the condominium project. Side and at the bottom left, you'll see the apartment projects side. Now, both of these individual types are of a contemporary design as called for by the specific plan. And you'll see a number of plane changes, both vertically and horizontally. You'll see deep window recesses at the first floor, a mix of materials. And pedestrian scaled elements like porches and balconies. Now, the project also includes over four hundred new trees on site of larger species. Like oaks and sycamores, double rows of trees along the the project frontages and also public art at the corners of the project site. Now, with respect to housing and affordability, when when staff is reviewing these residential projects, there are. Three main categories of affordability requirements. The first is there's a required percentage of affordable units for each new development. And here in the specific plan area, it's twenty percent, so twenty percent of new units have to be affordable. This project does meet that standard, providing sixty total affordable units. The second category is affordability levels in that it has to provide these units to individuals and families of certain income ranges. The project also meets those standards, providing to individuals and families with very low, low, median and moderate incomes. Now, the third category is a set of performance measures. That make sure that the affordable units are designed in the same way as the for sale units. And the project meets all of those performance measures except for one. So, you know, it meets the standards with respect to bathroom. Two bedroom ratios with respect to the average number of bedrooms. Except it does not meet the comparability standard. And that standard, and that's particularly for the condo side of the project. And that standard does require that all floor plans have affordable units. In this case, there are six floor plans, but the applicant has opted to concentrate. All of the affordable units for the condominiums into floor plan one. And normally that does not conform to city standards. However, the applicant has submitted for a density bonus provision here to. Use an incentive or concession to strike the comparability requirement of the city's development code. So the city did seek concurrence with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And State HCD did find that the applicant is using state density bonus law in a valid way. So in your, in your staff report packet, you'll find the required state. Findings for density bonus, and staff has been able to make those findings. And again, for that reason, you know, the approval of this particular density bonus incentive concession is ministerial in nature. Now, the project does also include a number of sustainability measures in its operations and construction. In fact, all irrigated surfaces and landscaped areas will be, will utilize recycled water, so the purple pipe. You know, the project is located nearby a bus stop on the thirty R line, providing alternative modes of transit. The project does provide solar panels on rooftop areas and on canopies, and also provides electric vehicle chargers. And with respect to public engagement, staff did hold a neighborhood meeting prior to the planning commission meeting. And approximately forty five members of the public from the Montage community attended and expressed concerns with the development. About the same number of residents attended the planning commission meeting as well and expressed the same concerns. And as you can see on the screen, the primary concerns were inadequate parking. The apartments and affordability levels on site. Build quality and the city's public engagement process. Now, the planning commission heard the concerns and at the planning commission meeting. Now, the Planning Commission heard the concerns, and at the Planning Commission meeting, unanimously recommended that the City Council approve the project. The Planning Commission did include four new conditions of approval with respect to design related to trees, pedestrian connections, and wall softening. Now, subsequent to the neighborhood meeting and the Planning Commission meeting, and in response to neighborhood concerns, staff is recommending an additional condition of approval that would add street parking to the project frontages. Now, the street parking would be provided in addition to the bike lane, the separated bike lane. The cars would function as the delineator between traffic and the bikes, and there would also be included tree wells as well. And, you know, this would only be in locations that the city engineer determines to be safe. So you'll find that additional condition in your meeting packet this evening. Now, ultimately, the project does provide about three hundred new units to the city with a range of configurations and sizes, different ownership options, rental options, in addition to sixty affordable units. As we discussed, there'll be over four hundred new trees, a new bike lane along the frontage. There'll be parklets throughout, there'll be, again, the solar and electric vehicle chargers. And the plan is consistent, or the project is consistent with the general plan, the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan, the Climate Action Plan, the Active Transportation Plan, and the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And it's for those reasons that the Planning Commission and staff recommend the City Council find the projects exempt under CEQA and approve the project. So that concludes my presentation, but first, I believe the applicant would like to share a few words.
Thank you, Jake, I appreciate the very well put together staff report. Just as an audio check, can you all hear me? Yes, okay, great, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is David Best, I'm with Shay Holmes, where the applicant for this project, and I appreciate your time tonight to go through and look at our project. I don't know if it's possible to share my screen or not. If that's not possible, then we can do without it, certainly. But just as a quick reminder of the history of Shay and this section of the city, back in the early nineties or late nineties, rather, Shay owned property in what is now the Isabel Specific Plan, quite a bit of that property, and we've been developing it over the years. Several community benefits have come from that. We've dedicated twenty-nine acres of hillside open space kind of on the northeast corner of the Isabel Plan. We built Kaya Tano Park, which is a ten-acre public park. We dedicated around twenty acres of land for the Isabel Avenue Interchange project, land on the north side of the freeway that was necessary to construct that interchange and get traffic off of Highway eighty-four off of the downtown, so we can have our beautiful downtown the way it is today. We also dedicated quite a bit of land down the Kaya Tano Creek, which runs through the Isabel Specific Plan, and that was land previously owned by Shay, and we've dedicated, permanently conserved in amusement. In the, in two thousand and fifteen, we built a secondary access road to Los Pizitas College so that they could continue with their expansion in the early part of the century, in the two thousands, and on today. I think they're still moving through with expanding the college. So we've been here for quite a while. We built the Sage Project and the Montage Project, and we are now coming through with the second to last piece of residential property that we own here. And like Jake alluded to in his staff report, this is a great project, it's got a lot of sustainable pieces to it. We're going to go all-electric voluntarily, so that we won't be plumbing natural gas into this community. All the appliances will be electric. We're going to have solar on every roof. We're going to be in compliance with the two thousand and twenty-two California Energy Code, which is very, requires buildings to be very energy efficient. We're also providing quite a bit of affordable housing, as Jake showed in his staff report, and we're going to be constructing an apartment complex here, which we think is somewhat desperately needed in the city. The last time an apartment complex was built, other than a couple that I think are in the hopper right now, was easily fifteen or twenty years ago. So we think it's a great project, and we're really excited to move forward. And we're here to answer any questions if you have them. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address us on this item?
Yes, Mayor, there are three requests to speak. The first is from Yolanda Mider, followed by Jeff Caskey and Matt Montreal. Yolanda Mider, please unmute yourself.
This is Yolanda Mider, a resident of the Montage community since two thousand and twelve. I have concerns regarding the proposed Shea development on Portola Avenue. One, the entrance exit onto Duckcott will cause major traffic congestion at the intersections of Duckcott and Montage Drive. Drivers going from Duckcott to Helican wanting to get to Collier Canyon, there is an entrance access only. We see drivers not turning around and use the entrance as an exit. This is going to add to already a hazardous situation. Is it possible to have Portola Avenue as their only entrance exit or have an entrance exit on the upper portion of the new development onto Collier Canyon? I have discussed these concerns both with Jake Potter and Stephen Riley, the principal planner. Number two, install a tubular fence for separation of properties. Tubular fencing is attractive and prevents people from the new development to park in the guest parking and also easy access through the landscaping into the Montage community. Parking in Montage is a huge problem. Number three, add a tot lot. We do know of residents from the new development, and that would be the apartments and condos utilizing Montage Community Tot Lot. The usage of the residents of the new development will put the burden on the Montage Homeowners Association for the repair costs and maintenance, and again, adding to our parking problems. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeff Caskey, followed by Matt Montreal. Jeff Caskey, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Council and staff. This looks like a great plan from Shay, and we appreciate the work that Shay puts into these developments. Having gone through the packet quickly, I did not see any hillside views. We frequently talk about the doubleization and, you know, don't want to speak too poorly of our neighbors to the west, but it would be good if we could see how the development affects views, both from Montage and from the freeway. Was that in the packet that I missed it, or can we get a look at what these kind of three or three-and-a-half story buildings will do to our vision? Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, thank you, I'll close the public hearing. Does staff wish to address any of the comments we heard in the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, it doesn't seem that staff has any additional comment at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I see someone has their hand raised, but they had it earlier than it dropped out. And I was just, in just in case, was there a technical problem there? Or I'm willing, well, let's.
Okay, now I have an opportunity to unmute. Sorry, I didn't have the opportunity to unmute myself and ask a question earlier or make a public comment. If I'm allowed to, I would like to.
That's on the six dot three, right?
Yes, yes. I would like to second the sentiment that this is a great development. I've been a resident of Livermore since two thousand and fifteen. It's gotten more and more expensive to live here. And I'm a millennial, and like many of our millennial friends, we're seeing ourselves being basically priced out out of having families and living in Livermore. And I want the City Council to keep that in mind whenever they're considering new development, which is always welcome because it puts down pressure on prices. Specific to development, I would like to see the protected bike lanes eventually extended down Portola and over the highway. That would definitely improve safety for cyclists. And finally, I will end with, I would like the City Council to also think about what is the use and really the democratic nature of the so-called neighborhood inputs? I've been to several of these sessions myself, and I've seen the results of them, and they always seem to come back the same, which is there's a handful of usually wealthy and older residents that show up and demand more parking. This is not at all representative of the needs of the Livermore city as a whole. And I just call into question the whole nature of seeking quote-unquote neighborhood input when it always comes back the same, which is we want more free parking. That's all I got to say, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. And I'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. Councilmember Kick.
I have a couple questions for staff about one of the added provisions, adding some extra parking on Collier and Portola. I understand, just as the previous commenter mentioned, that oftentimes people in my generation don't do a great job showing up with those public comments, and we generally don't ask for more parking, we generally ask for cheaper housing. So I just want to make sure that we never compromise our bike plan in order to add more parking. Are we able to ensure that no matter what parking we add, our bike plan will stay the same? And that if for some reason a bike lane does not fit as if it was guestimated that it will right now, once we do like a full design review, that it will be up to the discretion of the city engineer to change where that parking is, the number of units, parking spaces, et cetera?
This is Paul Spencer, Community Director. And yes, we will ensure that the bike lane is an incorporated part of the project, and parking will only be added where it can be safely incorporated and where it doesn't impact the bike lane or other amenities.
So we're not making any specific promises about exactly what or where. It's that we are looking into it as staff and that the city engineer will make that determination at the staff level.
That's correct. Our preliminary analysis is that we'll be able to include it in certain areas, but you're exactly correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Monroe.
I wanted to appreciate the presentation a great deal. I thought it was very clear, I thought it addressed the issues raised by constituents as well as the need for this project. I've been watching this, I've had the privilege of participating in approving the Isabel project as a whole. It is a very exciting way to move forward in creating whole communities as part of, you know, as one piece of a whole city in ways that are responsive to a variety of residents and potential residents. So this is really exciting to see this first development come forward. I would agree with Councilmember Kick in terms of ensuring that we are paying attention to multiple modes of transportation as we go forward. I'm going to say that a little bit more broadly than you did, Councilmember Kick, but, you know, that's what we're looking for, is that all, everybody can get from one place to another. And I did want to pursue the one question of entry-exits and the nature of traffic. This is a frequent comment when developments come forward, but it is, you know, it's a natural concern. If you could speak to that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So the project is relying on the environmental impact report that was prepared with the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. And that particular environmental impact report found that there'd be no significant traffic impacts in this area. And in addition, the proposed development is at a lower intensity than contemplated by that EIR. And so, you know, traffic impacts would be even lower than disclosed and discussed in EIR.
That sounds great. If you could be, you know, so, could you be a little more specific in terms of no? I mean, that's not what it feels like to residents. I believe you, I do. But if you could be a little bit more specific about why that there won't be those impacts that people believe there will be.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, you know, in general terms, during a traffic analysis, you know, you'll sort of, the discussion will be based around the number of trips generated by, you know, the certain number of residential units. And so, you know, there was calculations done as to how many trips would go in and out of this particular development. And the EIR has stated that, you know, there wouldn't be any significant impacts, or it said it another way, sort of delays to traffic in this area. So I don't know if our city engineer has anything to add to that conversation.
Hi, this is Bob Vine, your city engineer. And just to go in a little bit deeper in the detail, the EIR forecasted traffic volumes at the intersections around the Isabel Neighborhood Plan, including the Portola and Montage Drive intersection. And it looked at traffic from the existing uses and the proposed future uses. And it showed that the traffic using Montage Drive is well below the amount of cars that a local street like that can handle. It's showing, you know, peak hour volumes in the neighborhood of a hundred vehicles per hour, and that's very low. So if you look at the site plan and how the roads connect up, there may be some people that do come out through the Montage street to get to Montage Drive, but it's probably a lot quicker for majority of the residents in this new development to head south straight to Portola and get on that way. So I don't expect a lot of traffic from this new development to enter Montage at all.
Thank you, I really appreciate the clarification.
Councilmember Carley.
Yes, thank you, I find this to be an exciting project. I look forward to its development and completion. I just wanted to point out to the folks that have had some concerns, principally from Montage, I know that we've gotten some emails from folks, and I know that they're expressed some concern about the Planning Commission meeting. I watched nearly all of the Planning Commission meeting where this was discussed and heard and saw that the planning commissioners did acknowledge the concerns that the Montage residents had, and I think they addressed it appropriately. I appreciate the slide, Jake, that you had on reminding us what some of the concerns were and some of the resolutions. I do also applaud the Planning Commission on terms of increasing the number of street trees as well as the size of some of them. I don't remember the exact number, but they're taking down a dozen or a couple dozen and actually going to plant over four hundred trees. So I think that is commendable. I also appreciate the developer and with all the all-electric appliances, no gas appliances, that certainly speaks to what we're going to focus on here on our Climate Action Plan. Appreciate the solar on rooftops and so on. I also read the street parking, I was interested in that. I'm glad that the staff took it upon themselves to figure out, after hearing the concerns from the Montage people about street parking, came up with, I think, a workable solution, not only providing, you know, bike safety, but also additional street parking. I appreciate Councilmember Kick's concern as to not to compromise bike safety, and I don't think they have, based on at least what I've read, and I assume that. And I don't think they have, based on at least what I've read, and I assume that staff will continue to monitor that. I, I find it's an exciting project. All the affordable units I think are just terrific. And I think it's going to be a very nice addition and another, another sort of addition to the Isabel plan. So I appreciate all the work on this and look forward to approving it tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Following all my fellow councilmembers, I don't have too much more to add. I thought what councilmember Carling said was really very thorough. And I second all of my councilmembers' comments. In, on balance, I think this is a well-thought-out project. It's, I appreciate the developer working with staff and listening to the community and the comments from the planning commission and coming up with a project that pretty well meets all of the things we're trying to do. And I just say in general, Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan is very important and I'm glad to see this project is getting us off to a good start. With anybody, any further comments or emotion? Councilmember Carling.
I'll move staff recommendations.
Councilmember Monroe.
And I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further conversation? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Ms. Mayor Banano is absent for the record, and Mayor Warner.
Hi, that's unanimously. So I, I think we'll, we're now on to item seven dot one. And I think this will be the last item we take before we, the break. And this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase Renewable 100, which contains 100% renewable electricity from solar and wind sources in California as the default electricity product for Livermore's municipal East Bay community energy accounts. Now, I'd just like to point out, I'm going, in the light of potential financial conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from participating on this item. And I'm going to do so by turning off my camera and microphone. I will rejoin the meeting when this item has concluded and to take us to a break. So we go on to staff presentation now and I'll be absent.
Honorable mayor, now absent, and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardesova. Item 7.1 will be presented by Tricia Ponteau, senior planner. Ms. Ponteau?
Thank you, Mariana. A good evening, mayor and formerly mayor and city council members. The item for you tonight is a decision to enroll municipal East Bay community energy accounts into the Renewable 100 service option. The city currently receives electricity from East Bay Community Energy and we are enrolled in the Bright Choice service option. First, I want to introduce you to our Climate Action Plan intern, Sarah Ansel. She's been working with us this summer to move forward a number of our climate action efforts, including this project. She's going to walk you through the presentation for this item and then we will all be available for questions.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. East Bay Community, oh, next slide, please, first. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. East Bay Community Energy, known as EBCE, is a joint powers authority that serves to provide more renewable energy than PG&E at competitive rates for customers in Alameda County and the city of Tracy. And this includes the city of Livermore. EBCE purchases electricity while PG&E delivers power, maintains the grid, and bills consumers. Next slide. When EBCE started, it offered three energy options for customers to choose from. Bright Choice, which offered a higher renewable energy content compared to PG&E at a lower rate. Brilliant 100, which offered 100% carbon-free energy at the same rate as PG&E, and Renewable 100, which offered 100% renewable energy at a slight premium over PG&E rates. Renewable energy is carbon-free, but also naturally replenishable, including sources such as solar and wind. Next slide. The city was a founding member of EBCE in 2016 and started receiving energy in 2018. Municipal accounts, municipal accounts, which include all electricity accounts that are paid for by the city, were originally enrolled in Bright Choice. In 2019, the city council voted to enroll municipal accounts into Brilliant 100. In 2021, the EBCE board voted to phase out nuclear power as a carbon-free energy source and could no longer offer Brilliant 100 at price parity to PG&E. As a result, Brilliant 100 was discontinued at the end of 2021. Any accounts on Brilliant 100 automatically reverted back to Bright Choice unless a request was made to enroll them in Renewable 100. Because the city did not request to enroll in Renewable 100, municipal accounts reverted back to Bright Choice on January 1st of this year. Next slide. Today, we are currently using the Bright Choice option. Bright Choice provides approximately 60% carbon-free energy at a 3% discount to PG&E rates. This is less carbon-free energy than was offered previously due to the recent loss in nuclear power as a carbon-free energy source. Based on the city's 2021 electricity usage, the 3% discount will result in approximately $26,000 of savings per year over PG&E. In comparison, PG&E reported 92% carbon-free energy in 2021. Alternatively, Renewable 100 continues to be 100% renewable electricity from solar and wind in California. It is offered at a 3/4 of a cent premium over per kilowatt hour over PG&E's rates. This will result in approximately $70,000 in increased spending over PG&E annually. Staff is recommending that the city of Livermore opt up municipal accounts to Renewable 100. Next slide. There are several benefits of enrolling municipal accounts in Renewable 100. It would completely decarbonize municipal electricity, which is a major component of the Climate Action Plan update and will result in GH, greenhouse gas emissions and progress toward, sorry, will result in greenhouse gas reductions and progress toward the state and cap goal of carbon neutrality by 2045. It is also an opportunity for the city to lead by example and take tangible actions locally to address climate change. Additionally, EBCE invests its revenues back into local programs to expand clean energy and energy resilience. The city has already benefited from these local programs, including the new electric vehicle charging hub that EBCE is installing downtown. The city is also pursuing upcoming EBCE programs to electrify our municipal fleet and install solar energy with battery backup at critical municipal facilities. Next slide. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase Renewable 100 as the default electricity product for Livermore's municipal East Bay community energy accounts. This concludes staff presentation and we are available for questions. EBCE staff are also participating in the meeting and are also available for questions. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in because.
So councilmembers, this is your city attorney. You do not have a mayor to preside over this portion of the meeting, nor do you have a vice mayor. I would call upon one of you remaining to take on that role for the rest of this item.
Can you do that, please, Trish?
Given that I am the representative on council to EBCE and this is something that I've been waiting for with great anticipation, I would be happy to do that. So if that suits everyone else, I will go for it. Yes. Councilmember Carling, you're okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right then. I will call for public comment. City clerk, do we have public comment at this time?
Yes, councilmember Monroe, there are two requests to speak. The first is from Alan Marling, followed by Matt Monterio. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm in favor of this project and I would like to see more like it. Further, I believe that nuclear energy should be part of the green energy portfolio. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Monterio. Please unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello. I, I actually think that we shouldn't go to the 100% renewable plan precisely because EBCE dropped nuclear from its mix. You cannot call yourself, you know, a serious environmental organization by taking out nuclear from the mix. So if the city has a choice on which plan to go with, it should probably revert back to PG&E. And that's it.
Next speaker is Carl Winty, followed by Ben Barrientos. Carl Winty, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Carl Winty, just want to take another opportunity to say thank you all for what you do. What a great, worthy discussion and not myself, I'm not educated enough to have a point of view other than to know, and my generation, our generation, we, the people, know how important this discussion is in terms of how we look towards the future as a community. So for those that know, those that care, those that educate themselves on this to continue to come forward for good, rational, pragmatic decisions for our community, our species going forward. Those that lean in on it, I salute you. That's all.
Next speaker is Ben Barrientos. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. I think it's a good idea. I think it's forward-thinking. I think we should also encourage a company to go look at nuclear because they're coming up with new inventions and new ways of a smaller system that's safer. And, you know, if you compare nuclear and access that happen with, it's very, very minimal compared to coal and the the oil petroleum industry, thousands die and maybe millions with the pollution that occurs with carbon and all that. So I think it's a good idea. I think it's forward-thinking. I applaud the city council. And we, I hope we encourage that company to start looking at nuclear too. I'm done.
Councilmember Monroe, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, so I would like to address the nuclear issue before we move on. And I'm wondering, I'm not quite sure the best way to do that. This is something that I've observed as part of the EBCE board. But I also know that we have Alex Giorgio here from EBCE. I'm not sure whether, could somebody please direct me as to who would be the best person to address those questions? City manager, city attorney, help?
Ms. Ponteau or Mr. Spence, who would be the best person to answer this question? Staff or representative?
This is Paul Spence, your committee director. I would suggest that we ask the EBCE representative to provide us with some feedback on the removal of nuclear.
Thank you. All right, then I would ask that to be the case. We could admit, Mr. Giorgio, I'm really sorry. I must be mangling your name.
That's quite all right. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks. Good evening, councilmembers, meeting director Monroe, members of the public. Yes, on the question of nuclear power, EBCE was offered an allocation of the existing nuclear power that's currently generated at Diablo Canyon and dispatched to the grid. The, the background on this was that all current electricity customers in PG&E service area, whether they're with PG&E or they're with a community choice energy program like ours, they all have to pay for the nuclear power that's being generated by Diablo Canyon. It's, it's a legacy contract. And so our customers are already paying for that. It's actually a line item. It's part of a line item that's on our bill called the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. Now, PCIA is the acronym for it. And if you look at your bill, you'll, you'll see that there. And so the, the reasoning of the, of, of this nuclear allocation was that our, our policy team actually led, led the effort to make the case before the PUC that because our customers are currently paying that PCA charge, our agency should be entitled to some of the, the energy since it's counted as carbon-free. Nuclear power under California state law does not qualify as renewable power, but it, but it is, it is considered carbon-free. And so EBCE and all of our sister agencies, the others, the other community choice energy agencies like those in Marin and Sonoma and, and, you know, San Mateo, et cetera, we all had the opportunity to accept or reject our share of what Diablo Canyon produces. And it was a very contentious item before our board. And it was, it was a, a very difficult decision for them. Ultimately, the decision by our board was to decline to accept the, that nuclear allocation. So I just want to be very clear that this, this wasn't about, you know, developing any new nuclear resources or even extending the, the life of Diablo Canyon. It is the last operating nuclear power plant in the state of California and it's scheduled currently to close in 2024 and 2025. Although now there is some talk at the state level of, and the federal level of, of perhaps reconsidering that. But, but at the time that our board was considering it, it was just on whether or not to accept that allocation and we declined to accept that allocation. Each year, we can reconsider that decision. But that's, that's the background there. So we, we did not accept the, the nuclear allocation. And one of the, the drawbacks from that is that, that's one of the reasons why PG&E now can count such a high carbon-free energy content in their portfolio is because some of the agencies like EBCE decided to decline our share of the, of, of the nuclear allocation. So currently PG&E has, has the vast majority of it and it helps PG&E make the claim that they're, they're more carbon-free when, on, on that portfolio. But on the other hand, we do offer our Renewable 100 option, which is, as you know, 100% California-based wind and solar and, and it's not only carbon-free, but it's also 100% renewable. So I hope that answers the question. I'm happy to follow up with their other questions.
It answers my questions, but then again, I'm kind of familiar with this.
You're an expert at this point.
No, but there we go. At this point, if you would, if you could stand in case there are more questions. And councilmember Carling, you're up.
Yeah, I guess I agree with a couple of the speakers. I'm disappointed that nuclear is not included. But I do support moving to Renewable 100. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kick.
If I can, I would move approval that we go with staff recommendation to move to Renewable 100. And I would direct the public commenters to please go make public comment to EBC about this because they get a lot of public comments about why we shouldn't have nuclear. I used to be the EBC representative, but we don't often hear from you. So feel free to bring your comments there. And then if they change their mind, Livermore will also have nuclear power in our portfolio as if we vote for this. So anyways, I made a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to second that and, and I'm going to say that I was going to make that motion because I'm the director, but there we go. Too, too, too much love here. I, so I actually, I really appreciate the, the presentation. I thought it was extremely clear. I do, I am familiar with this. So I was watching it with that eye with, with this, with something that would communicate to people who aren't as familiar. I hope and believe it did. I didn't want to say a word from my own standpoint on the nuclear and just echo what councilmember Kick said, which is that I sat through more comments on people explaining to me why nuclear was the worst thing ever than I cared to relate. As I said at the last EBCE meeting, I am still suffering the scars from those meetings. And there was a fair bit of misinformation. Unfortunately, the people who spoke here tonight in favor of nuclear were not at those meetings. And it's a real shame because Livermore's response to an understanding of the place of nuclear in the renewable and in the carbon-free universe is very different than, oh, just to pick on somebody Berkeley's. So, you know, with, with, with that, I believe we. you know, with that, I believe we have a motion on the table. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kik?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Bananos absent from the record and Mayor Warner has recused himself due to conflict interest.
Okay, we're now on to our traditional break. It's nine eleven. Let's come back nine twenty-one.
Mayor, the time is now nine twenty-one. TV thirty, do you need to count them in?
This is Mike with TV thirty. You guys ready?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. And then five, four, three, two, one, cue.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back. We're coming back from our break. We're now on to, we just finished seven dot one. We're now on to seven dot two. Resolution appropriating 25K for the Water Enterprise Fund for participation in the Pure Water Tri-Valley Potable Reuse Demonstration Project, Phase Two Public Education Outreach Efforts. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor Warner and members of the city council. This is your city manager, Mariana Marashova. Item seven point two will be presented by Anthony Smith, the city's Water Resources Division Manager. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mariana. Good evening, mayor and council members. This is Anthony Smith, your Water Resources Division Manager. So tonight, sorry. Sorry about that.
Mayor and city council, I apologize for technical difficulties that we're having this evening.
Okay, and I likewise apologize. So I wanted to give a quick history on the unofficially titled Pure Water Tri-Valley Project. So potable reuse is the use of highly treated wastewater to supplement potable supplies. And this can be done either directly or indirectly. In 2018, Tri-Valley Water Agencies together completed a joint Tri-Valley Potable Reuse feasibility study. This looked at the feasibility of using this highly treated wastewater to augment supplies in the future. In 2021, the Pleasanton City Council voted to suspend future participation in some of the follow-up studies having to do with groundwater monitoring. Currently, the Dublin San Ramon Services District has initiated the initial phases of a demonstration project. The unofficial title again is the Pure Water Tri-Valley Project. The goal is to understand public perception and determine the feasibility of constructing a future demonstration project. The current phase of this project is focusing on public education and outreach. Right now, several different agencies have expressed their intent to partner together for this current phase, including DSRSD, the Union Sanitary District, the Alameda County Water District, the Livermore Amador Valley Water Management Agency, Zone Seven Water Agency, and tonight we're obviously discussing it here. The request from DSRSD is for the potential partners to contribute up to $25,000 to help with the cost of public outreach and education in addition to staff time. DSRSD staff currently have no expectation of future participation or future funding. And if approved by the council, $25,000 would be appropriated from the Livermore Municipal Water Enterprise Fund. That concludes my presentation and we staff are available for questions.
Okay, at this point I'll open the public comment. Does anybody wish to address this?
Yes, Mayor, there is one request to speak. Carl Winty, please unmute yourself.
I also see Dan McIntyre as well. But okay.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and all that care about these critical discussions as well are electrical grids previously and water and how it flows and clean water and rain and the delta and the bypass and the canals and aquifer storage and how we manage runoff, the Central Valley Project, the State Water Project, how it goes and flows. So, and sorry as I'm coming up, and for those that lean in and spend time here in this critical space for the good of our society, thank you, thank you, thank you. Cheers.
Next request is from Dan McIntyre. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Dan McIntyre. I'm the general manager at Dublin San Ramon Services District. I just wanted to augment a little bit of what staff made in their presentation. So although it's described as a Tri-Valley Project, the the partnership here is actually broader than that with some interest by Alameda County Water District and Union Sanitary District. So it's really a chance to look at some alternatives and some options in a broader framework. It's a small step. DSRSD is asking Livermore to to become another partner in Phase Two, not only the public outreach, but it's also an opportunity in terms of public outreach and public engagement to solicit input on the kind of information and research and understanding of advanced purification of the community, both here in the Tri-Valley and down in the Alameda County Water District, what the community might want to know more and better understand. You know, that process would take a year or so. We'd also look at funding opportunities. There's a lot of federal and state grant opportunities that are available at the current time to fund a Phase Three project. The scoping for a Phase Three project would be developed after input from the public over the next year plus. And we'd come back to the agencies and say, would you be interested in this demonstration pilot project? Actually setting something up in 2024 and 2025. This is building on past work here in the Tri-Valley. One thing that I would note is recycling is important for our water supply. I think the Tri-Valley has done a great job up to now with our recycled water efforts. I think we should all pat ourselves on the back. In Livermore Pleasanton and DSRSD, we're recycling a third of our wastewater collectively every year and that's a major contributor to our water supply in the Tri-Valley. The flip side of that, though, is we've developed only a third of our water supply from recycling. There's another two thirds of our supply that's available as an asset that we can develop. And what's the scale of that? Think about the amount of water we're trying to conserve this year in the drought. The amount of water that we're not using that we could recycle in whatever form, expanding our purple pipe system as potable reuse, other ideas. The amount of water that we're flushing to the bay in a year collectively in the Tri-Valley is twice what we're trying to conserve this year. So recycling, we've done a great job in the Tri-Valley, you know, with Livermore taking the lead in the eighties. And we should be proud of what we've done, but there's more opportunities. This is a chance to develop concepts, talk some more, educate the community, get input from the community and DSRSD supports staff recommendations and we hope that you'll participate. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ben Barrientos. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I was going to recommend a book by Erica Gies, it's called Water Always Wins. I think it'd be a good source of people to look at and read. And they talk about paleo valleys and natural water source that we've kind of ignored. And I think people should look at it. It's an eye opener. I've been reading it for a couple of days now. Called Water Always Wins. Then I applaud Livermore and what you're doing to conserve water.
Mayor, at this time there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for deliberation. Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. It wasn't abundantly clear to me what you hope to learn with the, I guess, the contributions from these various agencies toward this study. Is it, I gathered part of it is whether or not you'd put it back into the Aurora Creek rather than sending it to the bay, is that? And the efficacy of that in terms of helping refill the aquifer, is that right? Or am I completely missing the point?
So this current phase of the project would essentially allow us to get out to the public and try to see how people understand the implications of and try to see how people understand the implications of of potable reuse, see what kind of information they would need in the future, how we can kind of focus and create a an outreach strategy for the future. The demonstration project that's kind of being looked at right now, if if it constructed, so this phase is not the construction of that demo project, but if it gets constructed, that demo project would put water into into the creek, it would go down to the Almeca County Water District, and they would use it for groundwater recharge. But that's that's kind of the next phase in this. This current phase is really focused on public education and outreach and trying to understand how people perceive and what they would need in order to kind of be convinced in the future.
Convinced of what?
That this might be a viable option for our future water supply.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
Well, this might be a little tricky, but I think I understand what potable water reuse is. And I think I understand why we're trying to get people's understand how people can be convinced. But could you explain a little bit in more detail what exactly we're talking about?
So the concept of potable reuse at its at its most basic, you know, look is taking advanced treated, highly treated wastewater and making it available for augmentation of drinking water supplies. So the indirect route is perhaps injection into the groundwater basin. And then it would, you know, get further treated as it gets pulled out of the groundwater basin. Direct potable reuse would essentially go straight to a water treatment plant.
Okay, so we know that all the water we drink is actually reused since it's kind of a cycle there. In fact, it is a cycle. So this is simply making the cycle more more direct, as it were. And yeah. So moving forward on this would enable us to understand people's understanding of that water cycle and how what they, to use Tom Lehrer's phrase, the water that you flush into the bay, they drink for lunch in San Jose, a little bit like that?
I would say that that's accurate.
Tom Lehrer did have a way with words. Okay, thank you very much. This is sounds like a very worthwhile project to help educate and understand where people are coming from.
Okay, any further, Councilmember Kick?
I would like to make a motion, if possible, to go with staff's recommendation and continue public education and outreach.
Councilmember Monroe.
If it's all right, and you have nothing to add, I would second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. So do we have any absentee further comment? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Ms. Mayor Banano is absent for the record, and Mayor Warner.
Hi. The pass is unanimously. We're on to seven dot three, resolution calling for and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election for the submittal of the initiative entitled South Livermore Sewer Extension Project to the voters in the city of Livermore and consolidating that election with the general municipal election to be held Tuesday, November eighth, 2022. We have a staff presentation, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Warner and members of the City Council, this is Mariana Marashova, your City Manager. Item seven point three will be presented by our City Clerk, Marie Weber. Ms. Weber?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. This is your City Clerk, Marie Weber. The item before you tonight was previously presented to you as the South Livermore Sewer Extension Project and the measure entitled South Livermore Urban Growth Boundary. Tonight, the item is coming back at your request. The amendment directed by the City Council has been made, and staff is now requesting approval to place the measure on the ballot and ask that the City Council determine whether they would like to appoint a subcommittee to prepare the ballot argument and rebuttal or defer the argument in favor of the measure to Tri-Valley Conservancy as a bona fide proponent for the measure. You can see staff recommendation before you, and with that, I am available for questions.
Okay, before we go there, I'll open the public comment. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there are three requests to speak at this time. The first request is from Carl Winty, followed by Lori Souza and Asa Strout. Carl Winty, please unmute yourself.
With apologies, my hand was up from a previous item. I never took it down.
The next speaker is Lori Souza, followed by Asa Strout and Nancy Mulligan. Lori Souza, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and City Council and City Staff. I'm Lori Souza. I'm Chair of the Board for the Tri-Valley Conservancy, and I just wanted to reassure you that we are prepared to do our part to prepare the ballot argument and rebuttal argument or defer argument in favor of the measure. Thank you.
The next speaker is Asa Strout, followed by Nancy Mulligan. Asa Strout, please unmute yourself.
I thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, for letting us comment on this item before any legislative actions are taken. You know, this is a good opportunity for anyone within the city to have their say on how we as a city make decisions before we begin executing on those decisions. So I wanted to say thanks for bringing this forward to the public so that, you know, we can get a head start on this sort of discussion sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, there are no more requests to speak.
Hey, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for deliberation. Any, Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thank you. I support this action, would move approval of staff recommendation and suggest that Tri-Valley Conservancy prepare the argument in favor of the measure and the rebuttal.
Okay, I'll second that. So it's moved and seconded. Are any further comment on the item? If not, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Ms. Mayor Banano is absent for the record, and Mayor Warner.
Hi, passes unanimously. Okay, so at this point, we're now going to return to Citizens Forum. And per the per the City Council rules of procedure, we will now continue the Citizens Forum portion of the agenda. But before we continue with the public comments, I believe the City Attorney would like to provide some information. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Alcala, and I'm your City Attorney. I just wanted to briefly provide some information about the petition and about referendum law in response to some of the speaker comments made this evening. Referendum law is clear. If a petition challenges a legislative act, then it can be processed as a referendum. However, if a petition challenges a non-legislative act, then the petition has no right to proceed. The reason for this distinction is clear. If non-legislative acts were subject to referendum, then every decision and action by the City Council could become mired in politics designed to distract the City Council from focusing on its business or to interfere with or delay the city's implementation of the council's prior legislative acts. This is so because unlike an initiative that proposes new legislation, a referendum is intended to repeal legislation. Here, the petition challenged Resolution 2022 dash zero eight five, which approved an amendment to an agreement to sell property. The original agreement between the parties was approved in 2018. And that agreement implements prior legislative acts that occurred well before that for the development of the property as affordable housing. That resolution does not contain any new legislation. Courts have determined that a city clerk, as the elections official, is not required to process a petition as a referendum when it challenges a non-legislative act. Specifically, courts have held that the clerk cannot be compelled to process the petitions. And the courts have also held that the City Council's approval of an agreement to sell property is not subject to referendum. Now, while performing her duties as the city's elections official, the city clerk is a constitutional officer. In that capacity, she acts independent from the City Council. Her duty is to the voters. Her duty is to ensure their rights are upheld and respected. It is also her duty to ensure the voters are not manipulated or misled. Here, the city clerk declined to process the petition as a referendum so that her office is not used to further mislead the voters about the nature of the resolution. She must stay above the fray and avoid politics. As such, the City Council does not have a role in her decision. I hope the remaining speakers find this information helpful. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, City Clerk. Could we now proceed with the remainder of those who wish to address us on Citizens Forum?
Yes, Mayor, at this time, there are eight requests to speak. The first request is from Doug Mann, followed by Yolanda Finchekno and Jeff Caskey. Doug Mann, please unmute yourself.
Regarding your city clerk's refusal to submit the Move Eden Housing petitions to the county, this was her Mike Pence moment, and she blew it. As we know, the Vice President during that election counted the votes and ignored fake electors. Our city clerk received the petitions but refused to do her duty and accepted the fake objection prepared by your discredited city attorney. I was one of the people who presented the signatures to her on that Friday, and she told me directly that they would be delivered to the county following Tuesday or Wednesday. Failing to advance the Move Eden Housing petitions is illegal. Making quasi-judicial evaluations as your city attorney seems to want her to do is prohibited by law. And look, the thing is, the relevant case law comes from right next door in Pleasanton in a published appellate court case from when Jennifer Lynn sued Kayala. This stuff's not hard to find. Remember, our pretty, our previous city clerk, Sarah Bunting, she did something similar. She was pressured into filing a frivolous lawsuit against the residents having to do with another downtown ballot action the council didn't like. After probably realizing that she'd never be able to redeem herself or rebuild trust, she followed up with the only ethical action a person with integrity could have taken. She resigned. This is also the first major test of your new city manager, and I'll be watching what she does. But here's the thing, you still have six more chances to get your Mike Pence dilemma right. Five of them are you, the council. The sixth is your new city manager, and she could reverse this without asking you. But she's at a disadvantage because I doubt you let her know during her interview process that she would have to contend with a city attorney who chronically gives very poor legal advice and that she would need to double-check every opinion he gave her. And look, he just lost at the Supreme Court two weeks ago. Election integrity is paramount, and we know modern-day voter suppression goes on in places like the slave states. But we haven't had any reason to distrust our election officials here in California, especially not in Livermore. The current clerk unfortunately should resign, and anyone else associated with this scandal should also resign. You, council, need to set the earliest possible meeting date and express to your city manager that these ballots need to go to the county immediately. I get it. It might have been satisfying to see a referendum that you don't like take a hit, but this is voter suppression, and you can't let that happen. Last year, our country came close to slipping into despotism. Let's not flirt with that here.
Next request to speak is from Yolanda Fincheko, Jeff Caskey, and Matt Monterio. Yolanda Fincheko, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the mayor, to the council members, and yes, to our city clerk. And thank you very much for the explanation from our city attorney. My name is Yolanda Fincheko, and I'm here tonight to show my support for our city clerk in the face of the bullies from the Affordable Housing Opposition Group Move Eden Housing, trying to intimidate her for doing her job and trying to intimidate through her the voters who have already voted by voting on the existing council and asking them to basically vote on the downtown plan for us. I actually participated in some of the planning meetings and certainly in some of the discussions with the City Council and was satisfied that this was a job that was already done. I was shocked, like many of you, to see an opinion piece on the front page of Independent used as a tool to bully our city clerk and also the voters indirectly, as well as our council. Like everyone here, I love the city. I hope that unites us. What also unites us is what we do and how we act. Livermore, us, our community, we recognize each other by what we do. So we stand up to bullies. People like us do things like this. A city is complicated. We're bound to disagree. It's inevitable. We'll try to use all the tools legally available to us in order to lawfully make our voices and our needs and our opinions heard. People like us do things like this. Here's what we don't do. We don't subvert the will of the voters because we didn't like the way they voted. We don't hide behind a news outlet to intimidate a city employee for doing her job because it thwarts our goals. And I really hope we don't tell people who need affordable housing that instead we're going to give them a place for car shows. People like us don't do things like this. Thank you.
The next request to speak is from Jeff Caskey, followed by Matt Monterio and Rick Nordike. Jeff Caskey, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. It is unfortunate that City Council won't even be considering the concerns of over eight thousand Livermore residents who signed the Eden referendum. That's eight thousand people behind, besides the ones who said, I'm not sure, or let me read more. This is eight thousand residents who said, heck, yes, and took the time to put their name, address, and signature on a formal petition, petition. Some who derisively refer to the group of many names or who say that these people are a small special interest now have to consider that that group contains at least eight thousand voters willing to sign their names to a petition and say that they want their voice heard. Let's see how council responds. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Monterio, followed by Rick Nordike and Jim Hutchins. Matt Monterio, please unmute yourself.
Um, yeah, I would like to second the second speaker and my support for the council and standing up to these bullies and quite frankly, the petition signing that took place last month was a complete farce. The people pushing it were absolutely annoying, uninformed, and I wouldn't bet my life on the number of signatures that they've collected to be actually valid. Never mind the actual legality. That's the first point. The second point I want to make, a small one about the PDFs that you guys sent out with the agenda of the meetings. It's very actually difficult to figure out what what are the, you know, you have to skim the entire document to figure out what is going to be talked about in the meeting. It would be good to have a summary, like a bullet point summary at the top to say what is, you know, going to be covered on the on the agenda. And the last thing that I wanted to say is regarding street, I think the Brick by Brick program and specifically the situation under the bridge on P Street between Railroad and Chestnut by the McDonald's. So this is a, my understanding is that the city has a contract with Brick by Brick to periodically clean these sites. I think this has been a complete waste of money and a failure. To my estimate, I live north of town, north of the railroad. The area under the bridge becomes immediately trashed after it's cleaned, and this is very unfortunate because the people who And this is very unfortunate because the people who go to it are residents, uh, of, uh, north part of the town that are north of the railroad that are usually working class, they're a bit poorer. And, um, they walk down, they, they try to live up to the motto of having a walkable, livable city. They walk through the shops, uh, and, you know, they have to either navigate trash or navigate homeless people sleeping. I have nothing against the homeless people sleeping there. I don't think it's, uh, a good place for them to be there. It's not safe. Uh, and I will leave with this. Um, I've, I've had enough of this. I've, I've emailed the city. I've got no response. Uh, I've seen the city do nothing about this in the past three years. I've started to clean the area myself. Uh, today, I've taken out four garbage bags full of trash and about three, uh, carts. Um, I'm going to continue to do this on a weekly basis to keep my neighborhood clean and safe for those family members uh, that go up and from between south side and north side of town, and I challenge the city council to actually do something about it. Um, uh, I think, uh, a volunteer organization, quite frankly, would do a better job than a very lucrative contract to clean the place semi-regularly. So, uh, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Rick Nordike, followed by Jim Hutchins and Nancy Mulligan. Rick Nordike, please unmute yourself.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Good evening, Mayor and Council, almost morning. Obviously, this issue with Eden has been around a while, and I for one would like just one of you to admit that, yes, the park with no housing would be beautiful, but we've exhausted all the avenues. I repeat, all the avenues with the powers that be, and there's no way it will work anywhere else, or words to that effect. But so far, nothing else to that has been heard from you, the council. It would give you some much-needed credibility, a transparency. Low-cost housing is needed. The all-but-abandoned Emo Village Shopping Center site on, on Pacific across from the new council chambers would be a great location. Maybe it's available. Oh, and I'm in favor of putting it out to a vote. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Hutchins, followed by Nancy Mulligan and Carol. Jim Hutchins, please unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am speaking in objection to the city's actions to refuse to verify the collected signatures for the referendum. The question is not whether there needs to be housing. There, there is a need. The question is where it should be built. Such decisions need to balance all needs, including the needs for the public for open space. The Livermore City Council has, has been and is preventing the public's input. First, by ignoring the placeworks results that they paid for that said the citizens believe high-density housing and large buildings are not appropriate in the middle of downtown. Then by ignoring the constant calls by the public to look at alternatives for the Eden Housing location. The council, by claiming there are no alternatives, even though they haven't looked. And then by trying to move up the property's transfer date so that the new, so that a new council cannot change this council's decision. And now by claiming the referendum is illegitimate. The citizens have never voted on this housing project. That is a misrepresentation that has been pushed by certain former elected officials, um, that is intended to mislead the public. I'm also amazed that when people say they believe the actions of the city clerk are wrong, that their actions are then called bullying and intimidation, so you can't disagree. Apparently, these people believe that when the city attorney says something, then it cannot be disputed. Well, tell that to the appeals judges in the Garavanti Hills case that said he is wrong and the state Supreme Court. And when he's wrong, and he is wrong here too. There is legal precedent against the city's position, and the city's actions are instead forcing this decision to be made by the courts. The clerk's function is to accept the referendum and to verify the signatures, then to pass it on to the county for their actual verification. It's the council who would need to say and object to it being a referendum, a valid referendum. The council has a history of working behind the public's back, including recently losing that major court case against the very, uh, the Garavanti Hills lawsuit. And then they even sought to have it de-published. The council was elected to work for the people, and that means doing what the public wants. The public has spoken through the referendum, uh, their signature collection, and they want the citizens to vote on whether they approve of this council's actions. Instead, the council is seeking to ignore the public or at least to delay the argument until the property is conveniently transferred, rendering the issue moot. The citizens must be allowed a voice and allowed to vote on the referendum. Thank you.
Next speaker is Nancy Mulligan, followed by Carol and Asa Stroud. Nancy Mulligan, please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good, okay. This was something that I sent to the Independent, but I know that a lot of you don't read it, so I'm going to read this to you. Last month, I spent a few days collecting signatures on a petition for a referendum on the Eden Housing location. I live in District One by the airport and took the petition to the people on my street and the streets nearby. I probably went to about 50 houses. It turned out that not a single person was in favor of the Eden Housing project. At every house with a registered voter, they either signed the petition or had already signed downtown. There were a couple houses where none of the occupants were registered voters, but they expressed their support of the petition. In other words, 100% of the citizens in my area in District One are not in favor of the Eden Housing proposal. Not a surprise, because all along I have found that everyone I've talked to over the past years has been disturbed by our city council, that they have ignored the express will of the citizens. There are plenty of spaces nearby for affordable housing, but only one central area where we can have a park and community gathering space for all Livermore citizens. Less housing on the property would also mean more parking spaces, so we would be able to have parking spaces that were not so small that it would be impossible to get a child out of a car seat. And after 8,000 Livermore residents signed to have a referendum so voters could make their voices heard, it's unconscionable that the city refuses to put the subject up to a vote. Remember the 500,000 that was spent on community input? Our top priorities were enough parking and open space for all citizens to enjoy. Evidently, we all still want that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carol, followed by Asa Stroud and Moni Knapp. Carol, please unmute yourself.
Hi, sorry about that. My name is Carol, and I want to thank you all for being here. Um, I am not a Livermore elite. In fact, I do come from the north side of the tracks. Um, I would actually like to get together with the speaker about cleaning up under P Street because I agree with him. It's, it's, um, pretty messed up. One of the issues regarding, um, the Eden Housing is it will take the only non, uh, non, the only street pathway to downtown is L Street, which is the one, in fact, that we were talking about with Eden Housing. Other than that, our only access is under the train tracks. Um, I spent some time going out and meeting people and discussing ideas and concerns in our neighborhood, and I also offered a chance to sign the downtown referendum. In regards to Eden Housing, the downtown plan stood out. No one thought it was a good plan. No one. Um, so I can't understand why we're going so forward and even pushing the agenda on the citizens. Why? Why are we not taking into consideration the signatures and the voters? What's the hurry? Who's going to gain? And the future of downtown, it's the heart of downtown, and, um, we just need to think about future generations. Thank you.
Next speaker is Asa Stroud, followed by Moni Knapp and Greg Scott. Asa Stroud, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thanks for, uh, having the meeting go so, uh, late tonight. Um, I just wanted to, um, more or less reflect on my sarcastic comment from earlier, um, mentioning that if every item that was on the agenda was up for referendum, there, there is an opportunity for extreme abuse of our democratic process to the point where our system, specifically the city of Livermore, um, would not be able to function whatsoever. Um, some other recent examples aside those that were on the agenda is, you know, we recently hired, uh, a new city manager that the council made decisions on. That is not something that would go up for a referendum to the council. Um, we manage salary increases, pay increases. Those are not items that are going to be referendable, um, to the city. And we're not going to be voting on every individual item. We live in a democratic republic where some items are voted through a direct, direct democracy, while others, we elect representatives to do the job to represent us. And the people you vote for are people who reflect your opinions. Um, and in this case, the, almost the entire council at this point, um, has been voted on based on their support of the downtown over, uh, the last six years or three elections. I think the, the first, the one six years ago, um, maybe had somebody that wasn't, I mean, it's so long ago, I can hardly remember these days. Um, but my point being is, you know, when people say that we haven't voted on this, is, it's, it's simply not true. We voted on it three times by electing representatives who support the views of the people who have then supported this project. And I, and I say this very clearly. When these individuals ran, they ran on supporting the downtown project. So it's not that they ran on a different platform and are sneaking this in. It was extremely clear from day one what their campaign priorities are. And that is the representative democracy that we live in, where we have representatives representing us today. And, you know, I just wanted to reiterate that because, you know, there is, um, an article in the Independent, um, that is owned by Joan Sepulveda. There was no author to the article because I can only assume that possibly she wrote it herself. Uh, author may not be the right term. It's not bylined. I think that might be the proper term. That she might have wrote herself. That was, um, basically a back and forth, they said they said story, that, you know, made both, um, the paper and the lawyer representing the Move Eden Housing group very, they looked unprofessional. Um, and frankly, some of the comments made by the lawyer were inflammatory, and I can only assume that, um, the individual who's paying for that person, Gene King and Joan Sepulveda, once we see the paperwork, we'll probably find out what it is. They're the ones paying that person.
Your, your time is up.
Yeah, thank you.
Next speaker is Moni Knapp, followed by Greg Scott. Moni Knapp, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. We have heard of a lot of voices tonight, and I appreciate everyone speaking up so passionately. First and foremost, as a former police officer, I just simply don't see any, anyone being bullied, intimidated, or threatened, particularly against our city clerk. On a personal note, I've had many contacts with our city clerk on, on many occasions. I found her to be amazing, always professional, and taking the time to respond to any of my inquiries. She's doing a great job, and I appreciate her hard work very much. However, and however, in this case, it's not about bullying or any threats to anyone. The fact is, the personal attack against me and my qualification to be a mayor earlier was more about bullying than anything against our city clerk. I have the comments tonight. I believe the comments tonight were more about a challenge to the city clerk's decision not to move forward with the validation of the signatures gathered. For the records, if our city clerk's safety was threatened, I would be the first to defend her and anyone who would threaten or harm her for doing her job. Tonight, I too would like to take this opportunity to ask all of you to validate the recently acquired 8,000-plus signatures for the referendum to be validated and then placed onto the ballot in November. I, along many other residents in, in our community, have worked very hard to gather those signatures. I can personally say had walked door to door and spoke to many residents and have signed, that have signed a referendum. During my walk, door to door to gather the signatures, I found most of the residents, over 85% of them that I had contacted, would like to see a change of location for Eden Housing in our downtown. Their asks were simply to have the opportunity to vote on it. Just like Measure P, of which I supported and gathered those reference, uh, referendum signatures, I believe our residents should have the same right and due process to decide on what changes they would like to see. All we're asking from you is to do the right thing for our residents and listen to the myriad of voices from our residents, despite our differences, and let us vote on it. Please allow the signatures to be validated and provide the same due process that all of you had extended to Measure P over a year ago. A lot of people here spoke of the process of the due process tonight. I have to ask, have we really respected the due process? I believe by validating the signatures and put it to vote is the real due process. I hope all of you, as representatives for all of us, respect the due process too and place it onto the ballot this November. Thank you.
Next speaker is Greg Scott. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City of Council staff, City of Livermore staff. City of Livermore doesn't have the last word, obviously. That came about with the de-publishing effort of the City of Livermore on the Garavanti Hill decision, which the California U.S. Supreme Court disagreed with. Why would the City of Livermore do that? That was a hard-fought battle by Livermore citizens. It's indicative of how you do not want citizens to exercise their voice. It's 8,000 people that signed this referendum. Why not let them speak? As Ms. Thompson pointed out, that land was purchased 17 years ago. You can't wait 107 days to vote on this issue? It doesn't make sense to, to call a vote bullying is like out of Orwell. Orwell writing ignorance is strength. It doesn't make any sense. And then on the speaker who calls the opposition to Eden Housing Project plutocrats, well, wait a second here. The executive director of Eden Housing makes $415,000 a year. 16 or 17 of the top brass of Eden Housing Project claim 40% of the payroll. And one of the main partners in this is JP Morgan Chase, the largest bank by assets in the United States. The bank we bailed out with $12 billion in the toxic asset relief program during the Great Financial Crisis. How, housing is a problem of inequality. This is accentuating inequality. It's saying this is going to solve the housing crisis in Livermore is like saying that the Vineyard 2.0, spending $20 million to house 23 homeless, is going to solve the homeless problem. No, it's not. You pull so many shenanigans here, it's amazing. Why not let the people have their say? It's basic democracy. It, it, it just makes the whole situation seem contrived. Thank you.
Next speaker is Veronica Stewart Long. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for everything you do for our city. I support affordable housing. I am proud that Livermore is a leader in the tri-valley for supporting people in need. In the case of the Eden apartment complex, I wish it were inclusionary and not segregated housing, but I do support it in a different location. I'm speaking tonight because I'm disappointed with the downtown plan, frustrated by being continually ignored, and frankly tired of being bullied. Even though I am trying to help my city to be the best it can be, I'm continually told that I am an opponent of the city. In spite of the fact that I support affordable housing, I am told that I am a rich person who is fighting to keep affordable housing out. In fact, just this week, a city council candidate told me that I am fighting the city and its people. I am attacking neighbors and making people feel unwelcome. What have I done that makes me such a terrible adversary to my town? I've written about what I see as an amazing opportunity to develop a space that can be strategically designed to achieve goals and objectives like strengthening the social fabric of our community. I write about how a well-designed public space could be a source of pride for residents and something special and unique to Livermore. I see all that opportunity going to waste, so I support efforts to look into alternative locations for the apartment complex. That way, we can have affordable housing and do something amazing and productive. With all that downtown project space, I'm so disappointed that the city is saying the best that we can do is put in a four-story white stucco apartment complex. There's a fill-in-the-blanks feeling here. There's a fill-in-the-blanks feeling here. We have leftover housing from a plan created in two thousand and four, and then a hotel planned by the Lennar planners, who we got rid of back in two thousand and sixteen. And when it was clear that no one wanted housing in the project area, council came up with the land swap to get rid of some of it. And we got Stockman's Park put into the mix. Overall, it's piecemeal and lacking a big-picture vision, a vision of how that piece of land could benefit our entire community. I'm so disappointed, so I speak up. But I'm not even seen or acknowledged, and in fact, I am attacked online. Anyone who does not fully support the city's plan is said to be in that pesky group called Friends of Livermore or one of its committees. Dear council members, please acknowledge us. Please know that there are thousands of citizens who are independent people and not part of any group. We have been trying to communicate with you for years now, and have been ignored, and statements made that indicate we are all part of that group of spoiled, rich people who are mad because we didn't get our way. With all due respect, dear council members, that is insulting. It is dehumanizing. Please see us, and better yet, listen to us. Please reflect on the fact that in less than thirty days, eight thousand fifty-three citizens signed a petition. Please take in that message. Please hear that citizens are trying to reach you, and then let us vote.
Next speaker is Carl Wintey. Please unmute yourself.
Wow, lots of opinions, points of view. Wow. May we allow the stacked constitutions to govern us here in terms of the rule of law, in terms of the due process by the said constitutions, the U.S. Constitution, the California State Constitution, and then into the general plans of the county and municipalities. And, you know, set up on that first one of U.S. Legislative, Executive, and Judicial. And the staff, the executive, the administrative, they have to make decisions. They make decisions. They have legal counsel, and then it can get adjudicated. But there's a carriage in front of the horse thing in terms of the timing. They made a quasi-judicial ruling? No, I think the case law very much supports the decision that's been made. That said, I'm not a lawyer, I haven't read enough, but let the due process happen by all means, right, in full disclosure all the way through. But wow, when the facts are on your side, pound the facts, and when the facts are not on your side, pound the table. Relitigate history. So this stuff is documented as we go back. I've borne witness to this over the course of many a year. Voices not withheld. There has been ample time. Like, we've been at this for a while, and to say this is just basic democracy, to say that you can come in and overlay an administrative act to sort of cause the government not to function? It just doesn't make sense. Due process, and also understand the history of how we got here. Right? Bullying, there's no good in bullying, and I don't know that anybody's been bullied here. And Marie, sorry if you feel bullied. Mr. Moni Knopf, sorry if you feel bullied. I don't know that it's bullied. It's talking about what is qualified for mayor of our town. Like, what strange bedfellows are made? When you look at it, let's just look at the facts and how we got here. Because I know one thing is true. I can speak on behalf of my three cousins that live in the city. I can speak on behalf of their husbands, their five kids collectively, a bunch of bandmates, and a bunch of folks that have saw me, pat me on the back and be like, keep at it. Like, you're talking to people. We can't show up because we're in different phases of life. So for people to come on and be like, zero people say this. Absolutely nobody. It is a small, well-funded group. We'll say that out loud. Joan Sepulveda funds this, moves money very well, and can spend a lot of money per election cycle to wheel her way into what that is. So, Moni, Moni, it feels a little phony. Do the research. Let's talk. I've reached out. Let's sit down. Thank you all for what you do. Namaste. Here's the good government. Out.
Mayor, at this time there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, so Citizens Forum is officially over at this point. We're on now to Item 8.0, Council Committee Reports and Matters Initiated by the City Manager, City Attorney, Staff, and Council Members. And I'll start with Councilmember Kick.
Thanks. On July thirteenth, I had ValleyLink and TVTC on July eighteenth. Pretty small agendas. Summer's fairly light for a lot of those commissions. I don't have any matters initiated, but I did want to point out, because it's our last meeting for a bit, and there are some really cool things that are going on in our community that I've been lucky to take part in recently. A lot of live theater. I have been a guest at Spark. Took my family to see Life is a Cabernet and took my daughter to see Thirty-Nine Steps. And I will happily be going to Las Bacitas to go see their production. It's just been a really nice way to get back into arts in our community, and I encourage people to take a minute. There are tickets at many price ranges, and I hope that people can take the opportunity to have some outdoor summer theater fun. And I've just, I want to appreciate our community partner, L.A.R.P.D., for putting on some amazing summer camps that my kids have enjoyed. And we don't do them. It's not us, but I know that it couldn't be done without the support of our city staff constantly working together to make these things happen. And I've heard nothing but good things from fellow parents who are sending their kids back to camp after a while off. So just wanted to end things on an appreciative note of some of the great stuff that is going on in our community, and I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Carla.
I don't have anything to add tonight. I've spent a good bit of the time between the last meeting and this meeting in northern Arizona, rafting in the Colorado River with a granddaughter, so that was a great time. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe.
I put my comments are mostly part of the supplemental report. I just want to comment on one experience I had earlier this week. I attended the town hall that Congressman Eric Swalwell held at the brand-new gymnasium at L.A.R., sorry, wrong governmental agency, the school district's new gym at Livermore High. Turned out it was the very first time that had been used. And I was quite disappointed that some of the people present used the opportunity to shout out from the audience, used the opportunity to grandstand. Doesn't matter what the subject was, whether I agree with it or disagree with it. But I think that thinking about what civil discourse is for a community matters. It matters at the national level, as we are experiencing profound dysfunction. And it also matters at the local level, where we've heard in public comment some interesting comments. I would just encourage everyone to stay with the topic, stay with the facts. Be sure you know what the facts are, and think about who benefits and why. I wanted to make one more comment specifically about the petition, because I had an interaction. I saw a number of people, but I had one interaction with somebody who was collecting signatures from out of town, was trying really hard to understand what was going on and why. And so I explained to this person, I sort of walked through the history of this. And as he's listening, he's getting more and more upset because he did not understand that this would delay public housing. Not public housing, would delay affordable housing. It would delay housing for one hundred and thirty people. And, I mean, assuming that this petition went forward, which is, you know, what his assumption was at the time. And it was clear that he felt that although he was collecting signatures, this was something that was being done to him and to people like him. I think that's fairly important for us to reflect on as we go forward into the future.
Okay. The only thing I'll report out on is gave the State of the City address. That was quite a deal. Quick bottom line for everybody is we're doing really well. So I'm happy with that, and I actually, I got a fair amount of feedback from people who said they felt really happy to be part of Livermore, based on what we was able to report out there. So that made me feel good. With respect to matters initiated, could staff maybe speak to the request from Matt Monturial about the P Street underpass? That did sound, we had two people that talked about that. Could you just let us know, let me know what the situation is there?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Mistress Spence to comment, but I am not sure if we have sufficient information at this time to respond fully. Mr. Spence?
That's correct. We will do some additional investigation and provide some information to you later.
Sure, that would be my request. Is that reasonable for you to let us know what's the situation there?
Yes, we will follow up. Happy.
So could I get some, how many head nods to follow up on that? Okay, we got it. Well, thank you. I appreciate the willingness to do the follow-up there. Well, now we're on to adjournment, and tonight's meeting is going to be adjourned in memory of Barbara Savoy, who was an active resident of Livermore and served as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee for twenty years. So adjourn in her honor to a regular city council meeting on September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven PM, held virtually using Zoom. Thank you. Good night.